Clock fantastic. Today, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, November 7th, 2024. It is 9:00 AM. Today's agenda action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda anytime. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch, and I have a feeling we will be going to lunch today. First, there will be roll call. I have all commissioners in chambers today, and invocation will be given by Irene Albrighton. First Christian church, please rise.
Good morning. It's greetings from South Carolina. I have laryngitis, so my prayer will be a little brief. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and for the opportunities it provides. We ask your blessing on this meeting, on each participant, on the agenda before them. We ask that you grant them clear thoughts, a cooperative spirit, and keeping them mindful of the needs of the people they serve and represent. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Yes, on the pledge.
A pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please.
Let's go as a room full of people.
Yes, we do need to leave a pathway. For the case we need to get out. Of course, we would, of course, open the doors over here if there is any reason for evacuation. Please, a pathway to the back door, please. All right, public participation, you actually be taking on any item until it's properly agendized. Now, item 13B is agendized, so therefore, public comment will be taken care of when we get to that item. So this will be public comment for anything other than any agenda items today. It's anticipated the public participation at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Okay. Mr. Smith, you have a...
My name is Don Smith. I'm here on behalf of Lucas Home and Development, Project One, and the general development community doing work in Dayton Valley. When we could go today at 12:35, I was informed by the county manager that effective immediately, there would be a moratorium. No tentative maps, no final maps, no building permits of any kind that affect fluent going into the rolling A to be permitted. We spread that word and you put out a press release on Nevada Day indicating that decision. We held a meeting with county manager, utility director, and your community development director in this room the following Tuesday. We believe what they wanted was some solutions and recommendations from us. As of today, we've had little or no contact from any of the three individuals. I've had some contact with the city manager, county manager. We want you to realize that we want to be partners. We went through this once before, four years. And the development community, utility director, and the county worked together to resolve an issue. I'm trying to come to terms or come up with words to express what has happened here, and I really can't come up with them. So I'm going to use words from one of you. This is from you in a discussion. Since I've moved here, this is probably one of the most catastrophic things that has ever happened to Lyon County. Your words, not mine. You are affecting with this decision approximately $250 million of investment in the Dayton Valley. From what I understand, you were given one day's notice of this before I was given it on Thursday. Reached out to many of you on this board, two of you I have had contact with, one has not returned my call or my email. This is a very, very serious issue. We're not saying the report that was provided to the city county manager is an error. We say we have concerns, and we also believe that an inter reaction was taken to create a moratorium. We also question what authority does one man have to mandate a moratorium affecting $250 million? I'm in a quandary. I don't work well and avoid. I partnered with youth people in this county very hard the last three years with the Traditions Project. I have the light that we worked on together, the signal. Traditions for five years, we finally have the approval. I'm telling you today, I've had to suspend that because I can't sell a piece of property. If I can't build a house, I can't sell a lot to a developer that wants to build homes. I have no way to get the money back. I also have...
Sir, your three minutes are up. Thank you, you're three, you're three, you're up, sir. You're done.
I have 266 people that are going to be laid off Friday unless this is put on an agenda or a special meeting is called.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Morning. Chairman, members of this Christian, my name is Don Padlock, and I'm the chief operating officer of Vittler Water Company. We are large landowners in Lyon County. We run about 950 acres in the Dayton area. We have roughly 1,400 acres of water bank with Lyon County Utilities and another 3,200 acres of feet on the Carson River. So we are heavily involved in Lyon County in this future. I'm here today to talk to you about the director moratorium in the Dayton area as it relates to the effluent disposal. Our shop, we have three professional engineers, three hydrogeologists, and a CEO. In addition to being a professional engineer, there's also the utility directors for the city of Carson. So we come at this from a very technical background, a technical approach to what we're looking at. There's lots of information and technical data floating around, and I just kind of want to address just the basic facts of what we're seeing in the real world. You've probably all seen the Atkins report just based off what we see there, and there's a lot of data in that report. But just off the Atkins report, if you look at table 4.1 on page 25, you can see the inflow, the outflows, and the level of the monitoring wells. Clearly, the Aspen Creek ribs don't function at 1.4 MG they were designed to function at. I don't think anybody's challenging that. Question is, are we at the right level to say, hey, there's no more road? And we'd offer that, we're not at that point yet. That point will come in the future and more studies. And addition effluent disposal will need it to be found. But where we're sitting here today, if you go and you look at that chart, there's an area in there where the inputs and the outputs of the rapid infiltration basin stabilizes, and the basins are just, they dissipate water. It's not like it goes into the pool and it just stops. We believe that number is a very conservative number is half a minute, or sorry, 500,000 gallons a day, which is 0.5 MG on that chart. The Atkins recommendation was 0.35. We believe that is overly conservative and should not be the basis of a moratorium. Put that into perspective for use with some technical numbers. The difference between 0.35 and 0.5 is 150,000 gallons a day. When you translate that back to homes, that's 1,000 homes. So even that 150 gallons a day, it gives us three years, four years into the future, and an opportunity in time to solve the long-term issue with the overall exposure. I don't know where I'm on time. I just thought for a couple more things. You know, it's odd that we're having this public comment and not not an agenda item, something that's important, and also...
Your three minutes are up, sir.
One last thing, the fees that come from this development are the solution to the future effluent disposal. So don't cut off your revenue stream when you might have a problem solving the future. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Leaving my color.
Did you?
Good morning. My name is Dan Birchfield. I'm a civil engineer. I too am here to talk about the current situation. I agree with both Don and Don on what they said. I would like to add that, you know, in addition to the Atkins report, I just got a copy of the Dow report, and I need some time to review that. But I also reviewed the same table that Don reviewed, and I noticed that, I think that there is extra room for capacity in the system, no matter what the Aspen Creek basins have to offer. But I think the more important thing is, is that, you know, that's not my area of specialty. I think that the county should acquire or should hire somebody that does specialize in this to take a look at the Dow report, to take a look at the Atkins report, and to weigh in on what the rest of us are seeing is that there is extra capacity in the Aspen Creek ribs, and there is extra capacity in the overall system if you account for everything holistically. So we have reached out to somebody that does specialize in this. UES, they have offered to make this their top priority. They get on it right away and to try to get back an answer on if this is actually as big of an emergency as some of the staff seems to think that it is. So the development community is offered to pay for this consultant so it can come at no cost to the county. Really, we just want the county to make this their top priority as well so that we don't have to slow anything down. Thank you.
Good afternoon or morning. My name is John Maxwell. I'm here representing an excavating as an owner and partner. I was coming here to urge you to table item 16A. It's been told from from it, so but Don had mentioned, covered a lot of this, and Don's mention of the potential of adding an additional 1,000 homes on this makes this whole thing very premature, and others have said knee jerk. The impact of this, when you put risk 250 plus million dollars of investment, it doesn't come without risk of lawsuits being filed, right? It's been done without the board's approval, from my understanding, and direction to staff. Those another part of that is staff puts themselves at risk when they do things outside the direction of board, these lawsuits, to put yourself at risk personally. There's a potential, so you got to think of that before you start doing stuff without direction from the board. There's also, so me personally, my business, this action is put at risk $25 million worth of property to the company. It currently stopped north of $6 million in the works. I have invested north of a million dollars, new equipment, and hired more employees to take on this workload. But now I'm going to spend the rest of my day scrambling, having to fill the void that this action was put in my schedule, and more than likely I'm going to be letting some guys go this way. So with all that said, I don't have much more. Again, I'm asking you guys to direct your staff to lift this moratorium, or at least speak to this development community, hash this out. These actions shouldn't be taken without your guys' approval, public being able to communicate with you, to flush all of this out. This is too big of an issue to be directed by my staff without your knowledge, is what I understand. So that being said, I'm done. Thank you for your time, and please lift this moratorium and get us back to work.
Good morning. My name is Bobby Merrigan. I am the Director of Entitlements and Forward Planning at D.R. Horton. Our statement is this. We believe again there is sewer capacity and support working with Lyon County to resolve the capacity issue within the Aspen Creek ribs. Even though Lyon County is standing firm that each builder and developer can move forward with project development at their own risk, D.R. Horton is a publicly held builder and is required to adhere to certain corporate financial guidelines. These guidelines provide direction on how we allocate and spend for both horizontal and vertical construction. D.R. Horton stockholders and corporate executives will not approve the release of funds for site improvements without the ability to build and close homes. We would ask that Lyon County lift this staff-imposed moratorium so we can proceed with full serve letters, final maps, site improvement permits, and building permits in an effort to fully develop various projects with limited risk. For example, on a project we recently acquired, which is Woodbridge, we purchased 135 paper locks and have spent $5.1 million to date, which includes the purchase of both land and water. There's a total of 8.7 million in future site improvements held up for this one project alone. Without your direction to staff to lift this moratorium, we cannot move forward with site improvements. And like many other builders and developers in this room, we have no intention of leaving the Dayton market. In sharp contrast, we believe so much in Lyon County that D.R. Horton acquired Vittler Water Company and continues to entertain other pieces of property within this corridor. D.R. Horton is just one of several builder-developers in this market, and these effects are compounded when you consider similar effects to everyone across the board. In addition, Lyon County staff has ceased to accept new building permit applications effective two weeks ago. Although currently allowing certificates of occupancy and sewer connection on existing permits, the inability to obtain new ones will bring all active construction to a halt in the coming weeks. This will cost millions of dollars and send many people home without the ability to feed the families. It is also worth noting that Lyon County will not be receiving the revenue from any new permit fees if this moratorium is allowed to stand. Without this fee revenue, we would ask you all how Lyon County intends to keep their community development, building department, and utility services staff employed. With over $1 million in permit revenue to Lyon County from the Dayton corridor in 2023, 18-month moratorium would equate to roughly $10.5 million in lost revenue for that alone. In closing, this moratorium has an immense financial impact to all stakeholders, including Lyon County, and will be felt across northern Nevada as a whole. Commissioners, we would just implore you, please, lift this staff-imposed moratorium and let us back to work. Thank you.
Gary Gladwell, FNG Construction. From the report from this Atkins report that you guys received, the county is known and is culpable, I think, in suppression of this. They've known about this for almost a year with the deficiencies at the plant. And on their unexpected move on the 24th of October, they dropped a bomb on the community in what I view as an obfuscation, especially in the Dayton Valley area, which Dayton Valley Utilities operates. Businesses, builders, developers, and employees were all informed of the situation at the drop of a hat. This was unexpected. We had no clue what was coming down the pike. The utilities has known about this for over a year. They got the Atkins report, or they hired Atkins to do this, and they didn't inform any of the development community that there might be a problem with sewer plant. This is the livelihood of my employees, the businesses in Dayton, that all of the employees are working on Traditions, spend their money in that area. And with the moratorium, it put my job in jeopardy. I put all my eggs in a basket to do a job at Traditions this winter, and I excluded any other work that I bid on because I needed to have my staff and my crew onboard in order to do this project. And now, in one day, we were informed that we can't do this. We asked staff last Tuesday to please agendize this item, and they didn't think it was important enough to bring and put on the agenda today for you guys. But this is our livelihood. I'm appalled that the staff didn't put this on the agenda because this is important. This is an important cog in Dayton. I've lived there since 1988, and now arbitrarily and capriciously, everything, all work has been stopped, anything to do with hookups. So that's what I have to say. It's not just the development community. It's actually builders and its employees in this county that are losing their jobs for this. Thank you.
Hey, I don't want to, I don't have a public comment, but I do want to say that if you have the same thing that everybody else has had in the past, you can come up and say you agree, add anything new. I would, since we do have the right to change things around. I have the sheriff's department. They have to get to a graduation ceremony. So I would like to be able to break off public comment at this point, just for a short period. I'm not saying that your comments are not important, they are. And if you make another comment like that, I will ask you to leave. Do I make myself clear? We don't need any sarcasm in this department area at all. You want to leave? Okay. They need to get to graduation. Very important that they're at the graduation for the people who are coming into this county as sheriff's deputies. Okay. We will get right back to public comment when they are done. Am I clear? All right. We're going to move down to 6A. Sheriff, if you would like to come up. Sheriff Pope.
Good morning.
Okay, 6A for present, excuse me, Sheriff, I just created in now that you're up there. For presentation only, present Deputy Joshua Lynch and Deputy Ian Foster with Meritorious Service Medals.
Good morning. My county sheriff Brad Pope, for the record. I do apologize to the community that has shown up to exercise their First Amendment rights that that we interrupted that. I do thank you for your time. We really do appreciate it, we'll recognize it definitely. And I'm sure you'll have another one to speak after. Today, we have several awards that we're giving out. The first award we're giving out is the Meritorious Service Medal. And I'm going to read on why these two deputies earned the Meritorious Service Medal. On July 28, 2024, at approximately 1955 hours, the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Communication Center received information regarding a reckless driver in the area of Friendly, Nevada. Shortly after the Nevada Highway Patrol initiated a pursuit of the suspect vehicle, deputies Ian Foster and Joshua Lynch joined the pursuit and became the primary officers leading it a short time later. Prior to and during the course of the pursuit, the suspect vehicle was unable to maintain its travel lane, nearly hit multiple pedestrians, and collided with numerous objects and vehicles in the area. The suspect also swerved his vehicle at Deputy Lynch and Deputy Foster's patrol vehicles, attempting to cause a collision with them. Deputy's did not let this deter them and continue the pursuit, recognizing the danger the suspect posed to the community. They were to terminate the pursuit. As the pursuit continued, the suspect led deputies into a cul-de-sac at a higher speed. Deputy Lynch pursued him into the cul-de-sac. The suspect turned his vehicle quickly and sharply in front of Deputy Lynch. Deputy Lynch evasive maneuvers, but ultimately collided with the rear of the vehicle. Deputy Lynch's vehicle was disabled during this collision, and he sustained injuries, leading to hospitalization. The suspect fled the scene in a still functioning vehicle. Deputy Foster continued the pursuit, following the vehicle to the east end of Lynch Drive. Deputy Foster appropriately hacked off the suspect as the road turned to dirt, but the suspect ultimately lost control of the vehicle and rolled it several times. Deputy Foster approached a vehicle and observed smoke and flames coming from the cab. Deputy Foster attempted to extricate the driver through the driver's door, but cannot pull him through. As the flames became bigger, Deputy Foster knew he only had a few minutes or seconds left. With no regard to his own safety, Deputy Foster ran to the passenger side of the vehicle, broke out the passenger side window, used a fire extinguisher to knock down some of the flames, and with assistance of a Nevada State Trooper, pulled the unconscious driver from the vehicle and dragged him to a safe distance. Seconds later, the vehicle was fully engulfed in flames. Deputy Foster and Northland Fire Personnel attempted life-saving efforts, but the suspect was ultimately pronounced deceased on scene. Deputy Foster and Deputy Lynch demonstrated courage and perseverance in the performance of their duties in an effort to protect life, property, and to prevent a major crime where the apprehension of an armed or dangerous criminal. Their actions clearly meet the standards for recognition within the Lyon County Sheriff's Office. Just wanted to recognize these two deputies, even though the suspect they were chasing was dangerous, put multiple lives, multiple property in danger. Ultimately apprehended. Our guy still took the time to try and save his life. Ultimately, we're unsuccessful. Today, we recognize Deputy Lynch and Deputy. Today, we, uh, we recognize, uh, Deputy Lynch and Deputy.
All right, we're going to move to six B for presentation only. Present three friendly citizens for life-saving award for their heroic work during the fire.
Good morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope again for the record. Um, something that, uh, uh, haven't done a lot of is, is recognize our community members who, uh, also put their lives in the line of, uh, danger to help and save their fellow, fellow community members. It's my understanding that, uh, none of the community members that we're recognizing here today were able to show up, but they are being, uh, awarded the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Life Saving Medal. And so I now read why. Two memos recommend three friendly citizens for a life-saving award for their heroic work they did during the fire. On September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, there was a structured fire at an address in Ferney. I will put that on the record. Upon Detective Walker's arrival, he observed multiple men between the residence and the front fence who were walking an elderly female away from the residence. Immediately asked if anyone else was inside, and they all said that the elderly, elderly female was the homeowner. He asked her the, her name, and she stated no one else was inside. She later identified, and I will read that on there. Everyone was away from the residence and fire personnel began arriving. Detective Walker spoke with one of the males, Kenneth Walker, Jr. He advised that he and two of the workers from Quintero's tires and wheels pulled her from the residence's front window near the front door. Detective Walker found this remarkable because when he arrived, the front of the residence on the southeast corner, including the front door, the main front window and the front porch were fully engulfed in flames. Detective Walker, how soon after they pulled her out of the window, uh, they saw how many stated this within a minute or less that the structure was fully engulfed. Through this timeline, as well as the fact that the female was not out of the residence on her own, Detective Walker believed full-heartedly that the three men saved Mrs. Fenton's life. Detective Walker had Kenneth show whom, who Quintero's tire and wheels employees were that helped her. And they were identified as Antonio Roscoe, who was the first nine-one-one call, and Jorge Quintero. Detective Walker, as well as the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, believed that these three men saved Mrs. Fenton's life and should be recognized by the community for doing so without hesitation. Those three men are not here today, but if they were, and we'll, we'll ensure that they get their medals and their, uh, their certificates for, for Lyon County Sheriff's Office and the community of Lyon County. We want to recognize those three, uh, citizens that took action and set another one of our community members' lives. Uh, thank you, Mr. Uh, one more lifesaver, and then we'll, we'll get, we'll get.
One more lifesaving award, go ahead.
I do have to say, uh, the deputies did pick the right day to show up on Stephen Awards. The applause has been awesome. This is the Lyon County Sheriff's Office lifesaving award as well. And today we recommend, or sorry, recognize Deputy Trevor Bonds. On July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, approximately ten, eighteen, ten hours, Deputy Bonds sent dispatch to a medical call in Ferney, Nevada. The call note stated there was a six-month-old baby, uh, who was unconscious, not breathing. Excuse me. Uh, dispatch added the CPR was in progress. Uh, Deputy Bonds arrived before paramedics and realized there was a language barrier with the parents who were distraught. He quickly located the baby and discovered he was not breathing. He performed CPR on the baby and also a sternum rub. He was able to revive the, revive the baby and get him breathing. Uh, Deputy Bonds is nominated for the lifesaving award for his efforts. Uh, we are truly appreciative, and I know the family is truly appreciative of Deputy Bonds's efforts to save their infant's life. So today, we recognize, uh, Deputy Trevor Bonds. Yeah, I just, just want to say thank you, uh, for allowing us to present. Thank you to the community for giving this job to us. I was appreciative.
Drive careful. Said, drive carefully up to the graduation ceremony. And our gratulations to our Lyon County graduates of the academy.
Chairman Hockeney.
Yes.
I just want to thank our deputies, um, and sheriff department for all they do each and every day. Um, man, almost a tear jerker. So thank you, guys and gals. Um, and then, uh, I also want to give a shout out to Quintero Tires, um, and knowing those guys, they're at work, um, and, uh, that's why they're not here today. It isn't because they don't appreciate this, um, but, uh, they are hardworking dudes.
Mr. Keller.
I think, uh, Commissioner Jacobson said it perfectly, and so I'm, I'm just agreeing with him and, and thank you to the sheriff's department.
Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree completely. Really appreciate all the hard work and efforts that our deputies put in every day. So thanks, Chair.
Yes, I want to thank you as well. It seems like we're doing these award things often because your men and women are doing an exceptional job.
And I definitely, with my fellow commissioners, so we will move back to, um, all the comment. I think we have a a line still formed. Please identify yourself and sign in.
So as it relates to the moratorium that was placed on the development community two weeks ago, my specific items that I'd like to speak to are entitlements at risk in the Dayton Valley, specifically tentative and final maps that are in process. There are approximately six hundred and fifty lots across multiple subdivisions that are at risk as a result of this action, one of which will expire within the next six months. We haven't received adequate response from staff on how they're going to address that issue yet. And we would just like to get some answers on that, and we would like them to seriously consider the data that's being presented to them to reverse this decision that was made, we believe, in a very casey manner. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Erica Aspison. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to discuss the building moratorium and the financial implications in our community. My goal today is to provide a clear picture of how this moratorium will affect our local economy, jobs, and future growth. Let's start with the impact of Project One. These projects alone carry substantial economic weight. Total cost date are nearly sixty-nine million dollars. These projects have generated over two million dollars in permitting fees directly to Lyon County. A significant contribution to local government revenue. If we are forced by this moratorium halt, over two hundred and sixty jobs will be lost to us alone. Housing and commercial development play a cr- critical role in a healthy Dayton economy. Three hundred and ninety-four homes, forty-one townhomes, forty-three cottages, and potentially over three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial space are at stake. These aren't just buildings. They represent potential homes, workplaces, and shopping that our community needs in order to grow. Faulting this would create a void, impacting housing availability and economic opportunities for residents and future families looking to settle here. Future investments into this community will be impacted due to Lyon County's inability to provide reliable public infrastructure. Many more local businesses will be impacted. D R Horton's two main projects, Woodbridge and Amber Ridge, are projected to contribute over fifty-five million dollars into the Dayton Valley economy, supporting local engineers, contractors, tradesmen, and real estate agents, to name a few. The bridge alone will, will generate over thirty-four and a half million dollars for engineering firms and contract firms. Lyon County will receive an additional projected five million dollars through permits and fees as well. Amber Ridge brings another thirteen and a half million dollars trades and vendors, and close to half a million in real estate commission. A hundred and fifty-
And we'll go back to public participation, item four. Like we still have people in line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Phil Cooley. I'm here today representing River Vista Properties and W C Ventures. I'm here to speak about the recent building moratorium that was placed on the development in Dayton Valley. This administrative process is terribly disruptive and places a tremendous amount of uncertainty in our market. As one of many of the investors in the room, we are looking for a stable environment so that we can place our capital and hope that we get some type of return on it. I'm currently working with two tenants in my commercial center on Dayton Valley Road. Both of those tenants are through the architectural phase, and we're working on final lease preparations. When I got this letter about a week ago, it definitely kind of curtailed a lot of their interest in wanting to come out to Dayton. One of those businesses is moving their whole operation out of Carson City to Dayton, and they have to be out of their lease into a place in Dayton. So this uncertainty is definitely a problem. We were finally getting back to the point. And I've been developing in Dayton long enough to see some of the boom and bust cycles, but we're finally getting back to the point to where we can try to build that economic base. I know this commission always talks about rooftops and how it doesn't pay the bills. Now we need more commercial and industrial development. We're close to that point. And now with the decision, the administrative decision that was made, it puts all that in jeopardy again. This is a new problem and one that we all experienced in twenty twenty one. I went back and looked and I was one of the developers that helped pay have that study done to basically get us back to building at that point. This perception can impact long-term development prospects until this moratorium is lifted. My ask today is that we have active communication with staff. And that we have clearer policies and provide clear timelines. One of my disappointments was in talking to the county managers, there was no timeline of when this would come back online. It's hard to try to get commercial tenants when we don't have any kind of timelines. I'd also like to see transparent criteria and regular updates to help mitigate this uncertainty. And just the lack of action and outcomes kind of speaks volumes in my mind. So, thank you.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand. First, I'd like to give kudos to all the polling volunteers that were involved in this election. They just did an awesome job. It was seamless. I've heard a lot of input too about that. So I'd like to give kudos to Stacy and all the polling volunteer. Second, I understand the financial and economic impacts of this building moratorium. But I also applaud that the county is doing this and putting the health and welfare of existing residents above monetary value. Over the years, residents have repeatedly said we don't have the infrastructure to support all this building that's occurring, which is very fast-paced, and this confirms it. Developers also come in and existing residents suffer the consequences years later after they left. And again, I applaud that you're not going to allow this to happen. Stagecoach Valley is also having infrastructure issues. I spoke with Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, an engineer there, and they also have concerns with a large number of septic tanks, excuse me, that are going in with the Iron Mountain subdivision. I'm not sure that's the name, in the old turf farm area. They are requiring additional modeling and additional reports that include the impacts to the existing wells. So there's also sewage whatever you want to call it, impacts to other areas. So we, I applaud, we're taking a step back, take care of our existing residents, and plan this growth more wisely. Thank you.
Any further public comment on other items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Any comments on Zoom? Seeing no hands on Zoom, let's see, flip the page to okay, and our first public comment of the day is over. Item number five for possible action review and adoption of agenda. Missioners, any input? And county manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. I'd like to pull item sixteen A this time. I'd also like to do my county manager update with being item eight next if the board is okay with that.
Any objection? Contract. Okay. Any objection to moving his comment up? Okay, then we'll do that and yeah, I'm just making sure nobody has any public comment on the agenda. About any, then I will take it.
I could all make a motion to approve the agenda pulling sixteen A from today's discussions.
Okay, and moving county manager's comments. He wants to move his comments.
What does that have to do with approving?
Well, just because it's, you know, we, we item eight.
Oh, and moving, oh, I see. And then just moving county manager's report up in the agenda as well.
Okay, do I have a second?
Say it.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. County manager's report, go ahead.
Thank you. Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Good morning. For my county manager update today, I'll be giving an update on the effluent disposal capacity issue in the Aspen Creek rapid infiltration basins for the ribs. First, I want to assure the board and the public that life, health, and safety of the citizens of Lyon County is our top priority. I know from past experience working with this board through the twenty twenty three flooding that protecting life, health, and safety is your priority as well, and I want to thank the board for your continued trust in me and the Lyon County team as we work through these issues. Any decisions that are made are made with life, health, and safety in mind. The Aspen Creek ribs are supposed to meet the county's effluent disposal needs for future growth over the next twenty years in Dayton. After lengthy site identification, construction began in October of twenty twenty two and reached substantial completion in July of twenty twenty three. By October of twenty twenty three, Lyon County Utilities personnel noted standing water, also known as ponding, in the basins. This ponding was not expected for these rivers. Over the next three months, the ponding levels continued to worsen. By the end of December twenty twenty three, the groundwater was also rising, a condition also known as mounding, and approaching minimum separation between the bottom of the rib and the groundwater. By January of twenty twenty four, the ponding in the rivers would reach the maximum permitted level, and the mounting and monitoring well one exceeded the minimum permitted level of separation. Lyon County first contacted the county engineer Dowell, who also serves as the project design engineer, to investigate the cause of the ponding and mounding and to provide solutions. On March twentieth, twenty twenty four, Dow issued their initial findings to the county stating, quote, unfortunately, our findings are inconclusive as to why the ribs are not functioning as anticipated, end quote. With the, with the Dow report inconclusive, Lyon County Utilities made the decision to seek an independent third-party engineering firm to review the original design, determine the cause of the problems with the mounding and ponding, and to make recommendations to remedy these problems. Staff believed it was important to choose a national firm that was unlikely to be influenced by the local development community and that had expertise and experience building rapid infiltration basins. Ninety-two locations in the United States, over thirty-six thousand employees worldwide, and four thousand, of which four thousand are located in the United States, and extensive experience in sewer treatment and rapid infiltration basins. Lyon County signed a contract with Atkins Realis to review the Aspen Creek Rib Project Design and Operations Data, providing improvement recommendations, and serve as a technical advisor on this matter to Lyon County. Between May and October twenty twenty four, Atkins Realis conducted the review of the design of the Aspen Creek ribs. And on October nineteenth, twenty twenty four, Atkins Realis submitted its, its final report and conclusion. Atkins Realis concluded that major design errors are the primary cause of the reduced capacity at Aspen Creek ribs. The report states that the actual capacity of the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin is roughly twenty-five percent of the design capacity for three hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day versus the design capacity of one point four million gallons per day. In addition, the report recommends some corrective measures that, if implemented, may increase the capacity of ribs. But unfortunately, the capacity of the ribs will never reach their original design capacity. With this information in hand, Lyon County Utilities quickly calculated how much capacity was left in the Dayton sewer system, given the new Aspen Creek capacity information and the capacities of our other affluent disposal sites. It was determined that Lyon, that Dayton Utilities had enough affluent disposal capacity to serve its existing customers and those that were currently under construction, but there was not enough capacity to support additional development. There was also no urgency affluent disposal capacity. With this information in hand, County Utilities quickly, oh, sorry. In order to protect the life, health, and safety of the citizens of Lyon County, as well as to protect the environment, Lyon County immediately put a temporary hold on all new building permits, final maps, and some improvement permits within the Dayton Sewer Service Area. Lyon County also notified Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, Dowell, the development community, and the public. The decision to temporarily halt new development was not a decision that's taken lightly. I understand that there's a lot of money invested in those projects and a lot of jobs that they support. I also understand that the county's budget for the current fiscal year is built on the assumption that development would continue and that we would be receiving revenue from the sale tax on construction materials, real property transfer tax from the home sales, permit fees from the building permits, and connection fees from the new water and wastewater connections. But as I stated before, the life, health, and safety of Lyon County residents must be the priority. That is a principle that I am not willing to waver on. As it comes to development, our goal is to find a solution and get things moving as soon as possible. We have reached out to the development community to seek their ideas on possible solutions. So far, one developer has submitted some questions regarding their analysis of the Atkins Realis report, and we are working through those with that, with Atkins Realis. If other developers have ideas or questions, they can submit them to me, and we will see where those lead. Dow has also made some suggestions, which we are in the process of evaluating. One thing I would like to address is a request from the development community to hire a third-party engineer to review Atkins Realis' findings. I'm not in favor of this idea for a few reasons. The first is that we have already hired a neutral third-party engineer. That engineer is Atkins Realis. We hired Dow originally to tell us what was wrong. Atkins was brought in to review the situation after the Dow report was inconclusive. The second reason is that another review would, at best, only delay finding short- and long-term solutions for the problem. A review would likely take three to six months. Even if that new report returned a higher capacity number, we would have to do yet another review to determine why there are differences in the reports and which one is right, which would likely require additional field tests and more time. In the meantime, we would still have responsibility to use the most conservative capacity information. I would much rather skip the extra step and start doing additional testing and work towards short- and long-term solutions. On the topic of solutions, I want to talk for a minute about our plan moving forward. County staff intends to continue to use Dowell as the project and county engineer to find solutions and use Atkins Realis as a third-party expert reviewer. With that in mind, we are currently evaluating our operations to see if there are any operational changes that would buy us additional capacity in the short term and be able to restart issuing connections. We also plan to do some additional testing at both Aspen Creek and our ribs at South Plant to see if there is a way for us to get any additional capacity there. Simultaneously, we'd be working with our engineering team to determine the best path forward for a long-term solution. That long-term solution may be finding a new site to build additional ribs, upgrading the sewer treatment plant, or it could be a solution we haven't thought of yet. In addition to resolving the sewer capacity issue, we are actively working to determine which building permits can proceed without contributing additional sewer flow. Separately, we are evaluating which planning applications can continue through their respective approval processes without the need for immediate sewer service. Our team is working diligently to assess what is feasible and expects to provide more detailed guidance in the near future. Throughout this process, we remain committed to prioritizing the health, safety, and well-being of Lion County residents. Lion County will work to diligently resolve, work diligently to resolve the effluent disposal problems in Dayton. I will keep the board and the community updated as more information becomes available. Again, I want to thank the county commissioners for your continued trust in me and the Lion County team as we work through these issues. That concludes my county manager report. I am going to ask that these be included in record verbatim, so I will give these to you. Happy to answer any question.
Questions, Commissioner Hendricks? Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Kell? Commissioner Jake?
Appreciate the report, and just I know that we'll, as a county, will continue to be as transparent and open as possible, so, thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Hey, we're gonna go to. Time certain.
Mr. Chair, just stand up for a minute.
Okay. Let the record note that Commissioner Henderson has left. For a minute. We'll continue on here. Seven A, time certain at nine AM, you're certain, we passed that, public hearing, bill number twenty-four dash zero three for possible action of an ordinance amending Lion County Code Title Fifteen, the Lion County Land Use and Development Code, chapters fifteen point three two zero, section three, table fifteen point three two zero dash one, chapter fifteen point three two zero, section three, table fifteen point three two zero dash four, chapter fifteen point three two zero, section three, table fifteen point three two zero dash five, chapter fifteen point three three six, section three, table fifteen point three three six dash one, and chapter fifteen point one two zero, section four, to define and allow for private use airfields and general aviation airports and other matters properly here to, related here too. I believe this was opened over a month ago and a public hearing that continued today. If we have any input with public hearing, if not, then I'll look for a motion to approve this ordinance. The records show that Commissioner Henderson is back at ten eighteen, and I did say he left at ten seventeen. Okay. Sandra's iPad, or your hands down now? No, did you have a comment? I guess your hands down now? Oh, you're.
I, I have a comment on the, the next item, not this one.
Okay. Barely right now, speak up. Oh, you sure you want to comment on the next item?
Yes, I raised my hand too soon, thank you. Comment on seven B.
Oh, okay, we'll wait till seven B.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, we have no commissioner input on this, no public input, so let's go ahead and have a motion to approve the ordinance.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve an ordinance amending Lion County Code Title Fifteen, the Lion County Land Use and Development Code, chapter fifteen dot three two zero, section three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash one, chapter fifteen dot three two zero, section three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash four, chapter fifteen dot three two zero, section three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash five, chapter fifteen dot three three six, section three, table fifteen dot three three six dash one, and chapter fifteen fifteen.
One, two, zero.
One, two, that's one, two, zero, zero, section four, to define and allow for private use airfields and general aviation airports and other matters properly related thereto.
Second, okay. Jacobson. All right, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Number seven B, time certain at nine AM, public hearing, bill number twenty-four dash zero four for possible action improvement ordinance, amending Lion County Code Title Fifteen, the Lion County Land Use and Development Code to adopt airport influence areas and other matters properly related thereto. Hearing was started approximately a month ago, and so today we will be attempting to approve the ordinance. Any comments, commissioners? All right, we do have a comment from Sandra's iPad. And hold on because we're getting you unmuted. Go ahead and talk loudly.
Sandra Duncan, I am representing the Air Park Estates Homeowners Association, and we are owners of the Dayton Valley Airport. John Linky has sent the commissioners a memo recently, which I hope that you have had a chance to read. Unfortunately, we had not heard about this in time to respond earlier. And we hope that you can consider some comments regarding this. First of all, under section fifteen to, to twelve airport influence areas, since the full title of FAA Form seventy-four sixty is notice of construction or alteration, we're concerned with any construction in the airport influence area. Further, we're, you are required to, we're concerned about protecting each airport's imaginary surfaces as defined by CFR Title fourteen, Part seventy-seven dot nineteen, to prevent navigation hazards. We recommend some changes be considered for correctness. Under fifteen to twelve dot oh one airport influence areas, A is fine under section B, add any development or alteration requires the submittal of Federal Aviation Form FAA Form seventy-four sixty dash one, notification of proposed construction and alteration, and a receipt of FAA obstruction evaluation airport airspace analysis, O E A A A, with a determination of no hazard to air navigation. Fifteen to twelve dot oh two should be oh three to match the paragraph under fifteen point two twelve dot oh three, structure height limitations. Modify the cert, first sentence, height limitations within the airport influence areas shall be limited to the maximum listed in the individual zoning districts development standards. And there is, and add at the end, E, the results of the O E A A A received in compliance with fifteen to twelve. We rec, we are especially concerned about influence, about obstructions, saying it being limited only to greater than thirty-five foot in height depends upon their physical location and topography to, to meet all the, the, the imaginary surfaces. Concerned about exceeding my time.
So, I, Mike Starkey, I'm also here, and just to explain the imaginary surface is that something the federal government has set up to ensure safety of the aircraft. The aircraft fly in relation to the airport altitude. If the ground in a surrounding area goes up and you put a thirty-five foot tall structure on there, it may be much higher than thirty-five feet above the runway. Your ordinance uses thirty-five feet above the ground. It shouldn't be above the ground, it should be in, above the level of the runway because that's what the pilot in the plane knows about. So, just other than that, I don't know what else to say unless you ask questions that I can help clarify. But the term above ground is not accurate unless you're in an absolutely flat area, and we are not.
Comment?
Question for, they're referencing the runway height compared to the surrounding area height and the sphere of influence. Can you expand on that or?
Sure, so this ordinance is really to address consistency in county code. All of the FAA requirements would still be in place. You know, and, and what they're referring to is an FAA requirement, our code is dealing with building heights, allowed building heights within those zoning districts. So, trying to say that you modify the maximum building height based on runway height. You know, my recommendation would be to, to go with the language as is, if the, like, further consideration, we would have to then pull it and do some legal review on that.
I would just send, I just wanted a clarification just for their, their benefit, because FAA is going to require certain restrictions anyway, so, so it's FAA is going to come over the top of that. For, so they should be protected.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Actually, I want to thank staff for working on this order, I, you guys have worked on it for a long time. One good thing about an ordinance is once it's, once it's enacted, it can always be amended at a later date. I, I believe they, they've raised some legitimate concerns, but we don't have an ordinance in place now, so I, my preference is to move forward with this as written. So, that's my thoughts.
Plus, the FAA will move in as the higher authority. So, I'll say, thank you for your comment. Anything further, any further public comment? Seeing none, then I look for a motion on this ordinance, seven B.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve an ordinance amending Lion County Code Title Fifteen, the Lion County Land Use and Development Code to adopt airport influence areas and other matters properly related thereto.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight, commissioner and county manager reports, I'll start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to echo what Ms. Bernann said about thanking the volunteers at the polls and the county clerk's office for their hard work. I am proud to say I've never missed an election that I can recall, my memory isn't what it used to be. But it's one of those things I do value, cherish, and I, so I want to thank our hard, hardworking poll folks and the county clerk's office. Also, as a member of the Boys and Girls Club Board in Fernley, we had a great meeting. And so I attended that. Also, had an opportunity to jump on a tour of, a portion of the UNR's Ag Program and Biotech Programs at UNR, and found those very interesting, fascinating, and really appreciated the brilliance, some of those folks and what they're doing to develop necessary food in a more efficient, drought-tolerant manner. And finally, I just want to wrap up with thanking our sheriff's office once again. Seeing those folks risk their lives while protecting our citizens is greatly appreciated and and I cannot understate that enough, so, or overstate that enough, however, so I appreciate, I appreciate those folks, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Keller?
First, I'd like to start off with appreciating the sheriff's department too, and also our staff. Having our citizens' best interests is, is a paramount, life, health, safety, and that comes way above profit, profits, so I commend them for that. I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board, the Lion County Regional Transportation Commission, NACO Association of Counties Legislative Committee, the NACO West Region Meeting, and National Association of Counties Agriculture and Rural Affairs Steering Committee, and the NACO Rural Action Caucus. And what, what's happening in all those pretty much is that they're getting ready for the new year, the administration that's going to be coming forward, and the obstacles are what we're trying to accomplish. So, we'll know more moving forward, I have a meeting in California next month where we'll be attending the RAC meeting there, and leadership will have more important things to bring forward to you guys. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I attended the fundraiser for Friends of the Library Masquerade Ball, met with Dr. Shayla Holmes to get more of an education on what our Human Services Department provides for our citizens. Attended two meetings with the Dayton Valley Conservation District and also attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I attended the Mount House Communities, or Mount House Advisory Board meeting the other day, and, and of course, one of the concerns was raised with the reallocation of ARPA funds that we're going to talk about later, and yeah, there's, I, I really feel for our citizens of Mount House, they, they they have been neglected, I think, for a while, and that's really about all I have, thank you.
Okay. I attended, of course, in Agenda Review, and we had our N dot workshop last week. Unfortunately, I was sick and had to attend by Zoom. Did make a trip out to the Rapid Infiltration Basin site to look that over and discuss the problem area. Went to the, everybody knows item thirteen B here. Went up to that area and did a, a review of the area and our agenda item. Attended Mason Valley Conservation District, Smith Valley Conservation District, Smith Valley Citizen Advisory Board to listen to everybody's input. I do want to thank all of the precinct workers because they spent a long day. We had significant attendance for voting, and our employees here did an outstanding job of getting machines out and machines back, getting the votes tabulated and brought in. So I do appreciate all the hard work of everybody, our civilians and our workers here at the county. And that will take care of my report.
Chairman Hockeney?
Yes.
Having attended that N dot workshop as well with my other fellow commissioners, I do want to extend an olive branch to our county manager. If some of those items that we discussed get put on hold for more pressing issues, I think our, I think I, I'm going to speak for myself, I'm not going to speak for the other commissioners, but I do understand if we push back the timeline a little bit on some of that, and your plate's full, so.
Anything for other commissioners? Okay, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair, I just want to thank everybody who voted. You know, that is not a right that a lot of people have. So, to fail to exercise that is to give away one of the, one of the rights that men and women have fought and died for, so thank you for voting.
And I believe we got a sixty-six, sixty-six percent turnout from registered voters, if I read the numbers correctly. So, gonna have to get some people there, if we've got over thirty percent of the people not voting, then we need to encourage them to get out and take care of their right there. All right, we're gonna move on then to number nine, elected official report for you have any elected officials that want to make a report? Seeing none? We will go down to appointed official reports. We have any appointed officials that want to jump up and talk? Anybody on Zoom?
I think you're scared of the crowd.
Yeah. All right. And we'll move on to number eleven, advisory report. Any advisory board reports? Nice when things move along. Item twelve, consent agenda action will be taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item taken from the consent agenda Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Uh, I'll just jump in here real quick. I'm not going to pull anything, but I do want to make a comment on twelve Q, which would be a thank you to Patricia Avery for her service on the Lyon County Board of Trustees, Lyon County Library Board of Trustees. We appreciate all the effort, uh, any of our citizens that work on these boards. It is many times a lot of work and basically cuts into their personal schedule. So I do appreciate Patricia Avery. She is resigning from that position. Uh, having said that, I will look for a motion or items to pull.
Yeah, I just have a quick something on twelve F so we could, if we could pull twelve F.
Okay, so we'll pull.
And if there's no other commissioners wanting to pull anything, I'll make a motion um that we approve the consent.
Hold on there. Oh, any other commissioners want to pull anything?
No.
Any community members want to pull anything? Okay, sir, go ahead.
Uh, sorry. Thank you, Chair. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda twelve A through twelve R. Pulling twelve F for just a brief discussion.
Second.
Okay. So motion was made by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will go down to twelve F for possible action, accept the donation of thousand from Joseph Guild and on behalf of the Guild and Russell families to help with the maintenance and upkeep of the Dayton Cemetery at which their family plots are located.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just had a real quick question. Um, when we get a generous donation like this, I know um it's probably on behalf of a loved one. I'm assuming that maybe I shouldn't assume, but does this thousand dollars go into just the general upkeep of that or do we have? Do donations like this go to a special project or something that wouldn't normally be done a- at the cemetery, I guess is my question.
I I see Mr. Homestead is online. Um, I believe there was a letter including this particular item, so like Mr. Homestead.
Yeah, this Doug Homestead for the record, Facility Director. Um, the gentleman that sent it in, he didn't have, he just wanted for, he said, you guys keep it really nice. And he wanted to just donate to the upkeep of the cemetery. He didn't ask for a special project. Sometimes they do, like the Bill Crest is doing the flag. Um, uh, flag project over flag pole project. But this one uh just said just for the maintenance upkeep of the cemetery.
Okay, so I and and I had read that. So I'm just, so if if folks do decide to make a general or a generous donation, um, they can request that obviously if it's not something that we can do or the funds don't match that or if it requires additional upkeep throughout the years, it actually costs the county money, we would probably not approve that, but but um but folks that donate uh to cemeteries, parks, whatever it might be, uh, we do try and uh meet some of their requests. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes, yeah. I I was trying to think of a project we could do, maybe a bench or something in their honor, but they didn't really request it, so. And as far as the money, it it goes to the clerk's office. I'm not sure if it drops right back into the Dayton Cemetery Fund. That's a Josh question.
Right on. Well, thank you, sir. And I just wanted to then to thank the Joseph Guild um on behalf of the Guild and Russell uh families and make a motion that we approve twelve F as presented.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
So that motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson. Um, tell you what, Commissioner Jacobson, you want to read that into the record then as your your motion?
I definitely will. I make a motion that we accept the donation of a thousand dollars from the Joseph Guild on behalf of the Guild and Russell families to help with the maintenance and upkeep of the Dayton Cemetery at which their family plots are located.
Thank you. So we do have the standing motion then for Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Okay, motion passes five zero. Going to move on to the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair, before we start thirteen A, can we take five minutes?
All right, we'll take a break until ten forty-five. We convene. Do have a problem with my microphone. If I'm too close, it's reverberating. If I'm too far away, you can't hear me. So technical issues all the time. Regular agenda action, taking on a lot of items, unless otherwise noted, thirteen, Public Hearing on Binding Items. Thirteen A for possible action to approve the request from Honeywell Construction for a conditional use permit for expansion of an existing aggregate pit operation on land subject to RR twenty rural residential twenty acre minimum. Zoning located one thousand feet to the east of the intersection of Highway three thirty-eight and Desert Creek Road in Smith Valley and approximately eighty acres of a six hundred and eighty acre parcel, APN zero one zero dash seven four one dash zero eight, PLZ twenty twenty-four dash zero four two. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So um, given that we have a couple of conditional use permits on the agenda today, I wanted to address conditional uses and conditional use permits real quick before we get to the um presentation since it does apply to these items. So this is that are designated as conditional uses um in our land use table. Are uses that are generally recognized as being allowed, but also recognizing that they have potential impacts on neighboring properties. And so the conditional use permit process is really to identify what those potential impacts could be and what steps can be taken to minimize the impacts. Conditional use, the CUP process is not meant to be a rubber stamp by any means. So I do want to throw that out there. Being that if the impacts can't be minimized on the the surrounding properties, then a conditional use permit should be denied. But if through the conditions in that conditional permit, um, those impacts can be minimized, then the conditional use permit should be approved. Um, so I just want to, I want to make sure that um you know, I throw that out there. Obviously, I've received a bunch of public comments on um one of the applications is on the agenda today. Um, and so I want to make sure that uh I make the statement so that that can help kind of facilitate a productive uh discussions. Um, I would ask the board that if after hearing the presentation on either of these items that you do intend to vote no on it, that you state which impacts can't be mitigated or minimized and which findings in the South Report can't be made. With that, I'll turn it over to Lisa, who's going to give you the presentation on this point.
Good morning, Commissioner Chairman, Lisa Nash, Cedar Planner, Lyon County Community Development. And I'm here to discuss the Honeywell Construction CUP. This was um all right. So our applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an expansion of an existing aggregate pit operation uh to the north of an existing operation in Smith Valley. This. Okay, let me just type word fast. Yeah, would you go back to the location map and there we go. All right, so this map shows the location of the property. It is located approximately a thousand feet to the east of the intersection of Highway three thirty-eight and Desert Creek Road directly north of an existing Honeywell aggregate pit. The parcel size under review is what you can see outlined in red, eighty acres of an existing six hundred and eighty acre parcel. And it is in the process of being required by the applicant. So this sh- plan shows the site, the plan for the improvements. Uh, I'm going to give a little explanation. The yellow square at the top, the north on the map, is the proposed eighty acre aggregate pit expansion. The orange property, that's kind of an upside down L, is the existing aggregate operation. And I added a blue outline around where the existing pit and asphalt operations are currently. Um, the applicant is only applying for an aggregate kit, aggregate pit expansion to the north and won't be including the hot mix asphalt production in that uh on that property. And that is going to remain within the existing boundaries of the orange outline. These are just a couple of photos looking across at the property where they're going to be expanding into. So for an aggregate sand gravel extraction processing, it requires applicants under our code to apply for a conditional use permit, which is why they're here today. And in chapter fifteen to thirty oh six of Lyon County Code, findings are required to be uh reviewed by the staff, the planning commission, the board commissioners when reviewing a conditional use permit. This application was heard by the planning commission last month and, yes, last month, and um they voted to forward a recommendation of approval at that time. So I'm going to just go over a little bit of the highlights of the findings. And we do feel that it is consistent with the master plans contemplated land use for the designation of rural residential twenty minimum, twenty acre minimum within a rural character district. This uh operation has been in effect for many years and has been operated successfully with no complaints registered with us in code enforcement or the state as far as air quality goes. So they've had a very clean operating record. The applicant is going to be responsible for meeting the conditions in the CUP and they're going to need to submit site improvement permits to continue to expand the operation. And we believe those conditions will serve to mitigate the potential impacts on neighboring residential and agricultural properties. The site is not going to add a new access onto the highway. They're going to use the art assisting access for the existing operations. The roadways are going to remain internal to parcels. And the applicant has stated that they're not planning to expand their overall operational production capabilities. This is a backup and for future uh thing of materials that they're going to need to extract in the future. And they don't expect any seasonal traffic increase for the area. Additionally, as a safeguard to the neighbors and the surrounding areas, they are going to be required to submit a new Nevada Division of Environmental Protection Bureau Air Pollution Control Permit for the expanded surface area disturbance. The disdivision of NDP monitors the air quality by aggregate pits and they said any required additional mitigations that the applicant would have to meet as well. So based on being subject to the conditions of approval, the oversight that is held on aggregate pits, staff feels we're able to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. I do have one additional thing I'd like to point out. There have been letters both in support and in opposition to this aggregate pit expansion. They've been included in your um packets. And can we go back a few slides back to the location map? Thank you. Um, two, you see the red box and the little square off to the left of it, directly to the west. There is a, the closest residential property is directly above that little square and are within this area. You have a letter from them and I mean, I, when I spoke to the applicant or the neighbor multiple times, I told him I would make sure that I brought up that he does have concerns about this being in his backyard and the proximity to as well, and his letter is included. So for all fairness to have a balanced uh input. And with that, I am available for questions if you have any.
Questions. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I guess, how close to the property line can they uh do business here? Um, that's, I guess, my first question. I mean, can they go right up to the property line?
No, they'll have to maintain reasonable setbacks and will address that in their site improvement.
And then is there a crick run or drive riverbed or a crick running through this?
There.
Desert Creek.
I believe it's above the property, not running through this. It isn't.
Runs diagonal. You can see it on the map.
Right, but it it has no, that drainage does not have any, uh, won't be impacted.
It won't be impacted. And again, uh, the drainage, traffic, all the issues that may come up would have to be addressed when they do their site improvement permitting to move forward after this. This doesn't give them the right to do the operations without pulling, pulling the additional permitting and getting a state.
Thank you.
Anything, Commissioner Keller? Okay, um, I'm familiar with the area, of course. On your maps, at least two of them, we have an arrow of the point. Um, and if you go to the next map, you'll see the yellow arrow. And that unfortunately is behind that little square, but you can see the upper tip of the yellow arrow. The expansion is to be north and east of the current pit. Uh, just a little bit to the west of that arrow is Desert Creek. You can see that Desert Creek basically cuts that eighty acre parcel almost, you know, in half. Uh, the property we're talking about is the upper right-hand corner, or I should say upper left-hand corner, uh, north, northwest. What I will request for a condition is they follow the plan on the map that the expansion goes north and east. It does not go north and west. Because that's in two of the maps, they show that that's what they plan on doing, going up. That basically keeps, goes from the corner of his property down to the, to the uh, the northwest corner of the pit is about twenty-two hundred feet. And that means that if the pit is expanded, it will never get any closer than twenty-two hundred feet, which I believe, you know, currently Honeywell has done a fantastic job being a great neighbor. Um, I have not received any complaints. I have talked to the landowner extensively. Um, and I said that it looks at this point that the expansion will basically be away further away from your property than it is today. So that's something that I would like to request as a condition that they do follow their own map. Can they follow the arrow for expansion?
Through twenty-two hundred feet.
Well, basically, they can't cross over Desert Creek. You're not going to cut through the creek. So that to me is a west side. From that. I don't think that uh anybody's going to allow that creek to be cut. So uh, but that's what I'm looking at here is in fact, I'm just following what they say they're going to do. And I'd like to make sure that that is part of the condition for this expansion. Anything further? If not, I'd like to say we'd uh put that into part of the record here that they will follow their map and expansion north and east of their current pit.
Just to clarify, so would uh for just thinking about the language of the the condition, um, could it? Would you be okay with the the expansion will take place east of Desert Creek as depicted on the map or?
East of Desert Creek, right. It basically, the pit would be able to go north and east to the edge of their eighty acre parcel there. And at that point, they may want to buy more land later. They have to get bigger to the east or to the north. Any further questions or comments? Public comment? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Is here, they.
Sure.
Construction. Um, we have no intention of bothering Desert Creek. And um we will definitely be away from that. When you're talking, we weren't planning on taking our crushers to the east side of it. But does that mean we can't go in and take anything out of there? Maybe just rock, no crusher? Mine some of the big rock. It seems to be a big landscape thing these days. Mine some of the big rock. It seems to be a big landscape thing these days. Providing it's not, it, it would not. Bother that landowner and I have talked with him. And we have discussed a tree line and I told them the crushers won't go there. Um, so I'm just wondering if, if when you're asking for the condition. That we will not, we will not mine on the east side, does that mean? Everything on the east side. We won't take a crusher in there, but there are mineable rocks. Boulders. Can we take those out of there? As long as we're not bringing in any equipment that is going to disrupt his lifestyle.
Yeah.
Um, Honeywell, Honeywell is very. Um. This is our community, this is our valley. We're not going to try and hurt anyone who's there at work or hurt what, what they do. And um, like I said, I have talked with that gentleman and definitely not. Intrude on his lifestyle if, if he doesn't want anything there. I mean, we won't do that. Uh, we will maintain Desert Creek and we've agreed with the property owner who would try to buy it from. If Desert Creek decides to flood again. We're going to have a lake. We will take the water. We will take off. We will take the water into our pit so it doesn't flood that way. Um, we've already agreed that. We've already said that. Uh, I just want to make sure, you know. That I'm going to hear that, that I understand the condition as it will be placed. So that we don't.
Uh, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Okay, so no. Stay there. I have a question for you. Okay, so the way I understand this, the pit expansion as envisioned is to the north and to the east. You're asked if you could go mine big rocks on the west side of the creek.
Right.
Okay, but the, by mine, you mean just going out and picking them up, not, not a dig?
Picking them up. We'd have to use a loader to have to clear the ground.
Yeah.
Because it's covered in sagebrush and, and brush. Um, and then go in and um. You might have to put up a screen, just a rock screen. You put it on and it goes off.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be any pit.
Wouldn't be a pit.
Okay, that, 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 that was, that was the question I wanted.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just looking for landscape rock and we would, we would not be digging holes. That, no.
So, so, so any, any new, any new excavation would be to the north and the east?
Yes.
Okay.
That's extending the pit out, which is what, been working there about twenty years in that pit.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We will come in, we won't bring that pressure to the, to the surface. We'll come in from the side where we're already in and we've got a hole. We'll come in and, and start mining on the side. So those crushers will always be down below the surface level, which will help with noise. And we do uh run a, a water truck day on all roads and those crushers are. Uh, M Shaw comes in, they're pretty strict and you have um. Screw, um, water. That is on all the, the um, on the crusher. It's always missing. It's always sending water. So you keep trying to keep that dust down. It is, it's, it's all governed by M Shaw. We're. It's like my brother says, it's not our first rodeo. We definitely make sure we do this right. We have numerous crushers across.
No, and I'm appreciative of Honeywell. Your, your impact on the economy in Smith Valley is tremendous, but. A lot of people I know have worked there, driven trucks and things. So I do appreciate. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't digging a pit. Towards the, the other property owners.
Excavate a hole.
Yeah, and I know. The Garmes are, you know, they own the property and they're appreciative of your outfit also. Uh, you're good neighbors. But uh, I could say that yes, there's no problem with that surface. For me, I just want to make sure the extension of that pit.
Does not go.
Does not go. To the west of Desert Creek. Right. Okay. So. Think we understand how that's going to work?
Question.
Nothing for me. Any other, anything further? Okay. So we kind of boiled down to certainly the problem with the uh. Work on the west side of Desert Creek for landscaping uh rock. And that the extension of the pit will be north and east of the current pit. You got that written up?
We can write a condition of, to meet all of that, if that's true.
Yep. So. Got a public comment on this? I think we have, yes.
My name is Alicia Gomes. I actually reside as well on that property. I know my husband has talked to a lot of you. I have not. Um. So I understand everything that is being said here today, but. I feel like it's, it's a problem. Um, I feel like it will decrease our land value. Um, I feel like we would not be able to sell our home if we ever wanted to. Who wants to live next to a pit? Um, we first bought the property a year and a half ago and at the time that pit. Was not an actual concern. There were no issues. There were no future growth at that time. Uh, that being said, since we have lived there, the heavy truck traffic, the hearing of the crushers. And then the asphalt cooking was probably the worst this summer. Um, considering we are downwind. Um, that being said, also, um, I do feel over time the eighty acres will get developed. Because it has since seventy-nine continued to expand. Um, so those are my fears and that aspect I feel like will be back here fighting for our land. Um, so I personally do not want the permit to get passed. I feel like if this was in any of the else's backyard. They would be on the same um page when it comes to the quietness and the space of your home. So, um, I just want everybody else to think about that as well. If this was your home in your backyard and that's what you have to look at here. Would um, just please do the right thing and be supportive of our complaints. And legit concerns to stop the permit from expanding.
Hello, uh, my name is George Stanish. My wife, daughter and I moved to Smith Valley a few years ago. Drawn to the area for beauty and tranquility. It didn't take us long, however, to realize just how much more the valley had to offer. The community of Smith Valley is unlike anything I've seen, operating collectively in an elevated standard of morals and values. People go out of their way to help one another, compete each other with dignity and respect. My wife and I came to realize what a magical place we had found. We excitedly told our friends and family. We hope to recruiting them into the valley life. Many of our friends came to visit to see for themselves, two of which are Luke and Alicia Gomes. Luke and I have known one another for over twenty years and is man of his word and about as solid as a friend can be. Like my wife and I, he and Alicia soon fell in love with the valley and made the decision to relocate there. After looking at several homes, they found the one located at five twenty-six, State Route three thirty-eight. The property suited them perfectly, not only for the home, of the home itself, but the existing infrastructure in way of a shopper Luke and his love of cars. And the barn and pasture for delicious horses and livestock. Property is directly adjacent to the eighty-eight parking question for aggregate pit expansion. If the pit is expanded toward Luke and Alicia's home, it has the potential to negatively impact them in two ways. Habitability and loss of property value. If the impact were habitability alone. The house could be sold, funds recaptured, allow them the flexibility to move. Loss of property value is the main concern in that they would no longer have the opportunity to move, given Luke spent his savings on a home whose value cannot be recaptured. I understand that Honeywell Construction is only trying to keep their business successful. If the pit is expanded toward Luke, toward Luke and Alicia's home, it has the potential to severely impact their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, anybody further? Public comment on item thirteen eight? All right. I don't see anybody on Zoom. Page two. All right. Nothing further? Yes, go ahead.
My name's Rex Hardwick. I'm working with Linda Georgie and the Honeywells on this expansion of Jackville landowner. With, that they're trying to buy the property from. And I understand. The residential people's concerns, but I think there's more of a separation than they realized. If we could pull the map back up, I'd like to explain a couple of things. That you'd ask about also. The piece above there, um, this is the proposed eighty acres. The, the pit's only going to go to the east and north because of Desert Creek. Because it can't go on that side. They don't, they're not going to rewrap the channel. The only thing Linda was asking about was there's some large boulders from the alluvial fan that they use for landscaping. Where it impacts the, the corners where the, the two come together. It's currently owned by F I M. There will also be a roadway between them. And part of the agreement to acquire this property, there'll be a, a road built around and through so they can access, they graze their sheep on the other property. So there'll be between twenty-five and thirty feet buffer there. And. So from Desert Creek to the north and west, there'll only be some surface excavation. There'll be no mining or gravel. You know, removed. And it'll only be to the north and east, it'll be, and they're not going to raise the crusher. So theoretically, as the crow flies, they make them just slightly closer, but not much. And they're, they won't move anything if it's easier to move the aggregate. And they're going to mine horizontally, not get on the surface. They'll start coming in that direction. So there'll be as much separation as possible. So they're doing everything they can to try and mitigate any impact that anybody else, you know, and then. The only way F I would consider letting them use land is they have that access for their sheep. And stuff so that they're not going to impact. And then Gary Gorms, who has a pit above it. He's been very positive for it. He likes it. I think in your package you'll see he's, he's in support. And Honeywell, they're doing everything they can to be a neighbor. You know, I, I don't think it. If you're at my property, I'd probably feel the same way, but I think they're doing everything they could to mitigate it and it's not. Going to be that much more. They, they, if they went to the north more, I would have said that, or um. F I M couldn't access it and the material's not good. They run out of that alluvial fan. And so. They, they may not mine as much. It depends on the quality of the materials they find. What I was like that, if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
No. Okay. So based on the aforementioned findings and conditions.
I think Mr. Gomes would like to make.
Oh. Okay, he's online. Yeah, Mr. Gomes.
Um, hi there. How's it going, guys? Uh, my name's Luke Gomes. I'm also a resident. My wife and my book friend George talked. Um. My, my concerns are the, the proximity of even the surface excavation and that of our well and our property. We're still going to be hearing. Um, the machines and all that, even in, on the surface excavation is still. You know, nine hundred feet from our bedroom window, um, as I stated in my letter. Um, we, we still express some deep concerns about. The heavy equipment and uh dust and all that stuff, even from surface ex- excavation of the area. Um. And again, I, I like everyone else, respect the Honeywells and uh everything they. Uh, bring to the community and I understand their position and um, that, that's ours. We're. We're opposed to it because of the proximity of our property and don't, uh, we, we, we stand to lose a lot out of it. So. Uh, that, that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Hey, am I missing anything else on Zoom? Nobody else in here for comments? All right. But based on the aforementioned findings and the conditions of approval, I move the board. Of county commissioners approve the request by Honeywell Construction for a conditional use permit for expansion of an existing. Aggregate pit operation on approximately eighty acre site located approximately one thousand feet to the east of the intersection. Highway three thirty-eight and Desert Creek Road in Smith Valley, A P N zero one zero dash seven four one dash zero eight. P L Z twenty twenty-four dash zero four two. Uh, we have the conditions of approval and an addition of the approval, uh, conditions of approval would be. That the uh expansion of the mining pit will only go north and east into the east of Desert Creek. And that surface mining of landscaping rock would be allowed on the west side of the uh par- parcel. Uh, to the west of Desert Creek.
Second.
Okay, we have a question from Commissioner Keller.
On that surface excavation, uh. They're not going to do all of it, right? All, so is there a requirement when you do this C U P that they reclaim what they, to keep the dust down? So you're not disturbing the whole side? And then that's just a dust bowl? Would that be in the condition? I would, I would like that in there to.
I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's condition five.
Five. No shall not exceed.
Pertaining to lighting, noise, odor, dust, dirt, smoke.
So condition five is already. For the new to, uh.
That'll be, that'll be fine.
Have the addition of and reclaim the western side. Added to the condition of flight. I mean, they will. In, if they ever close down, they'll have to reclaim anyway. But that could be done soon.
I'm just saying, if you're going to go get some, some surface and as you get so far, please reclaim and then move on. That's all. I don't need it on the addition.
Did you have anything, Commissioner Jacobson? Okay. So the motion then will stand and seconded. So uh, at this point. We have a motion by Commissioner Harky and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to thirteen B. Everybody's here for that. Take a break. Uh, yeah, it's going to be a long one. Let's take five minutes. Take five minutes. It's, it's elevens eighteen. Let's go to eleven twenty-three. All right, we're going to reconvene. Eleven twenty-four. We are on item thirteen B. For possible action, to approve the request from Project One Nevada LLC. For conditional use permit for an aggregate extraction operation within the Sage Vista specific plan. Remain subject to R R twenty rural residential twenty acre minimum. Zoning generally located north of U S Highway fifty and east of Bryce Street and Mark Twain. On a portion of an approximately three hundred and seventeen acre parcel, A P N zero one six dash zero two one dash three zero. P L Z twenty-four dash zero four nine. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning Commissioners. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. So jumping right into location of the uh subject parcel, uh, it's located. On the, the east side of Dayton and sort of the, the western boundary, just pushing the western boundary of the Stagecoach community. Subject parcel is just over three hundred, it's just under three hundred and seventeen acres uh for the assessor's map. Uh, zooming in to uh the Copper Canyon subdivision to the west of the site. Uh, we can see Bryce Street, the main access into Copper Canyon. And uh, the location of ten mile hill water tank, south side of Highway fifty, just as a point of reference. So the, the subject parcel, again, about three hundred and seventeen acres to the east of Copper Canyon on the north side of Highway fifty. Uh, this image is provided by the applicant included in the um. The materials for the staff report. Uh, there are a number of other photos. Uh, this is essentially looking due north. Uh, along the eastern fence uh of the Copper Canyon subdivision and the stormwater. uh trench along the side of of Copper Canyon. Moving into the the master plan designations, uh, the site is within a suburban character district. Uh, suburban character districts are typified by having access or adjacency to uh public utilities. And Copper Canyon is served by Lion and Utilities. The master plan does, uh, the actual master plan designation is specific plan, uh, specific plan for the twenty twenty master plan. It's a land use designation for um primarily lands that don't have access uh currently or um service areas for public utilities. Uh, they often don't have established uh roadway connections. However, in this case, the property also is within an approved document, the Sage Vista specific plan. That document was approved in twenty twenty by the Board of County Commissioners. Some of the the conversation we had in the planning commission meeting, and I'll touch on that moving forward in the presentation, uh, did discuss the fact that the Sage Vista specific plan uh locate or identifies the area proposed for uh this extraction operation for future residential development. Uh, I think it's important just for everyone's understanding and to have this on the record, to point out the master plan level um approval for the Sage Vista specific plan is not a regulatory document. It's a guidance document. Uh, I believe the county manager at the planning commission, it brought up a, used a phrase that I think is pretty useful. It essentially is a mini master. Uh, provides future guidance for subsequent subdivisions, um, conditional use permits, even if and when the actual Sage Vista and it's implemented, uh, as well as um as zoning changes, et cetera. In other words, it's not a regulatory document. Moving into the actual zoning, uh, the site still holds an expired zoning district from our previous development code title ten. It's fifth rural residential district, twenty acre minimum. Uh, with the adoption of title fifteen, our current development code in twenty eighteen, we adopted the zoning consistency matrix. Uh, the matrix converts uh those expired district names to the current districts applicable in the development code. In this case, in this case, it's rural residential twenty acre memo. Uh, and you can see the entire parcel uh is designated R R twenty or subject to R twenty zone. Uh, moving into the land use tables in title fifteen, uh, this is where we uh determine what level of entitlement is appropriate and required for uh development requests. In this case, we use table fifteen three twenty dash one. You see that uh aggregate extraction processing uh requires a conditional use in the R R twenty district. Uh, so moving through again, this was a topic that I think was was better touched upon in in the planning commission, but just sort of in summary uh regarding the Sage Vista specific plan. Uh, it's not regulatory. It does not change the existing zoning. Um, it does assist the county with future development proposals. Um, but the the item in front of you today is not part of the Sage Vista specific plan plans for residential development other than the fact that the material um will have to be removed and leveled for future residential development. So notably, uh, the the approval of the specific plan did not change the zoning um for a subject parcel. Uh, the project location again shown here uh with with some additional information. Um, I did receive comments and speak to to um some concerned citizens about maintenance of historic uh access for recreation, to put lands to the north of the subject parcel. Uh, there are no plans to block that access. That that access will be maintained. You know, throughout either this, the the use proposed for the C P, or even in the future, when if the the Sage Vista specific plan residential development is developed, uh, historic access will have to be provided. It's sort of a a standard for developers when they're, when they're changing uh the 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 development on a site that does have that historic use. Another photo provided by the applicant, this is the paved access to Highway fifty uh constructed as part of uh the the Highway fifty um expansion. Uh, does include a cattle guard and then transitions from the pavement into a dirt road um up into the site and the location proposed operations and material to be extracted. I did take advantage of of one of their photos here uh to show the actual um site, the area, the knob, as it's called throughout the staff report. It's middle materials that is proposed for removal. So here we'll get into kind of the nuts and bolts of the request, uh, as well as addressing uh an error in language that that I perpetuated through the the staff report from the planning commission and here uh in the report that's in front of you today. I do apologize for using that word pit. Uh, the applicant's uh submittal materials did say aggregate pit. And that language was carried forward. Um, I think it's not a pure depiction of what is proposed. Um, the knob, as it's called, that hill is, it comprises the entire amount of material proposed for removal. That means this use that's requested is temporary, is not a permanent operation. Um, there is no uh actual pit or excavation proposed. This is extraction of the hill material. So that's why some of the language changed from the planning commission report to the Board of Commissioners reporting uh from aggregate pit, the aggregate extraction uh operation. So the uh applicant's materials did include a preliminary grading plan. Uh, they identified uh with by by engineers, they identified the volume of the material proposed for removal on the order of two hundred and sixty-four thousand cubic yards. And I'll have another slide here showing you. The uh, the relative footprint of that hill is on the order of eight point nine acres. This slide also includes a little bit of information, both physically and in text. Uh, one of them showing the location on the the eastern side of that knob to be removed. And then, not for that unfortunate location of the box there, you could see the second hill um to the west. So that would be between the Copper Canyon uh subdivision and the extraction area. Um, is a second hill that is proposed to provide some screening from Highway fifty of the operation portion of uh the requested uh operation. So we'll just move here to the next slide. And now we're kind of zoomed in along with topographic information on those two hills. Uh, that's blue area on the east again is the area proposed for removal. And then on the west, behind that second hill is the area proposed for the operation. That would include sifting, rock crushing, uh, and a scale for future uh commercial sale of the materials. Uh, you could see the paved access would provide the primary access from Highway fifty. And then um the 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 dirt roads from there moving into the site. Um, again, the the area here proposed for the hill, uh, the footprint in the order of eight point nine acres and the mass being on the order of two hundred and sixty four cubic yards. Uh, I I do think this is an appropriate time to point out, since the specific plan, the Sage Vista specific plan does plan for this area to be comprised of residential lots, I believe, on the order of twelve thousand square feet. Um, those lots would need to be graded out. So at some point in the future, this material, provided the Sage Vista plan is implemented, will have to be graded and and removed. Uh, some of that material could be moved offsite currently, not currently, but were the applicants provide to submit for just a grading plan, uh, the material could be taken down through grading plan and then transported other places in the county, uh, most notably this developer um that's involved with the traditions projects. The main driver, that's the developer for tradition. So there's plenty of material needs offsite uh as well as however, the grading would have to look in the future onsite, meaning this material would be moved around the site and transported offsite through a grading permit, or in this case, potentially um also through a commercial avenue where other contractors in the in the region could use the material from this site as opposed to bringing it in Carson City or.
Uh, one quick question here. Were the grading permit, which they would be allowed to do to level up their property? Would, do we have restrictions on that, like hours of operation? Could they just grade for twenty-four seven and what what type?
No, we we would have, we would have our limitations as well. The the main distinction would be the lack of the operations portion associated crushing and the sales, the scales would not present. Um, but much of the other operation portion would would be very similar. Um, one of the other distinctions would be that material would then would be moved around the site as opposed to just sort of being uh more more discreetly in this proposal um handled to the operations sold to other other contract.
Commissioner. I have a question about the other contractors part. So that traffic and all that from other contractors, excavation. I mean, just a a grading permit doesn't, doesn't require all that. So if he's, if he's using the property, the stuff that it's a completely different thing than if he allows other people to purchase stuff out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so now addressing some of the language again in in the staff report, I have discussed with the applicant, we both identified the fact that um the, some of the language in the submittal materials mentioned that the operation, the 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 request for the C P um would be three thousand feet from from Copper Canyon. And in actuality, the the material to be removed is on the order of three thousand feet. The actual operations area behind that second hill is closer to the order of eighteen hundred feet. So that, of course, is is notably closer. So staff uh uses our development code uh to assess conditional use permits. And uh, chapter two thirty oh six of title fifteen includes the findings we use. Uh, the staff report, of course, includes both the applicant's uh responses to the findings and and staff's comments on their findings. Uh, but sort of some of the summary here uh addresses uh sort of the high points or or maybe the rationale for staff's uh recommendations. Um, first, that, of course, uh, the title fifteen identifies this use as permitted with a conditional use permit. Um, but I think most notably, the fact that our development code does provide a number of standards um for uses like this, where we have a commercial use adjacent to residential property. Now, the subject parcel again is three hundred and seventeen acres, so it's not like we're just talking about one acre and one acre. Um, so there is notable uh separation between the residential uses and the operation. However, uh, we do have the means through title fifteen to place a number of conditions on this use. One of them, of course, being noise. So our our code does identify uh sixty-five decibel decibel average during the daytime hours and sixty decibel average uh during uh the evening hours um as being a max at the uh at the perimeter of the the residential zoning. The conditions of approval do include that that requirement that they need that stink.
Mr. Keller.
Who's required to take those tests? Who's the cost go to?
The costs go to the applicant. Um, one of those, the divisions of approval number thirteen was added uh after the planning commission meeting and requires middle annual reports through the county uh for the number, for the amount of material to be extracted. Um, but the community development director has a right to request other reports. Were there to be complaints uh that were confirmed as being valid, we would uh ask the applicant to provide the status.
Thank you.
So one of the other, of course, um, big topics uh in in the, in the comments that we've received uh related is related to dust. Um, Lion County does not have uh the staff, the means, the expertise uh to monitor dust. However, Nevada Division Environmental Protection, um, Air Pollution Control, um, entity does require a permit to be issued here. Um, essentially starts with the surface area disturbance permit, since it's over five acres. So they would be required to receive uh approval from N D P uh for this operation. Um, and then I think also rather significantly, uh, the predominant winds are from the west and southwest on this area. Making, meaning that Copper Canyon is upwind of the proposed operation.
Next stop, we, um, you know, we're talking, we're laughing. Please keep that down.
So I, we're not saying the wind only blows one direction. We're saying the predominant winds are in that direction. Uh, were these, were the the residents of Copper Canyon and this operation in reverse locations? I believe that would have been grounds for staff uh to maybe make a recommendation that would be different. Um, but, but they're not.
Uh, one other thing, though, I I mentioned here that you have uh the third item there screened from Highway fifty by a hill. Um, not sure why I'm worried about people on Highway fifty seeing this. Um, so we'll, we'll have another comment later when we get to that.
That's fair. Uh, and I would, I probably could have expanded that language a bit more. I mean, the southern portion of Copper Canyon would likely also be screened from the operation portion. Uh, the knob to be extracted, of course, will be visible. Uh, so the the attachments to the staff report also include, I'm happy to report a direct response uh from N dot regarding this operation. Um, we, we have work, I know the county manager and community development director tried to make sure we have better communication with our with our other entities. So um, N dot did provide direction. Uh, they did state that were the average daily trips, some point never exceed a hundred trips per day, then they would require an additional study. Uh, but they were uh accepting of proposal as currently stated. Uh, we still post conditional use permit where it's to be approved. Um, the county, of course, would still have uh other opportunities uh to place conditions and regulations on this proposal. Um, we would be, you know, working consult or almost independently, the fire district independently would review the development of the site. Um, where there'll be placing the potential, uh, we'll get into it. But part of the the project includes the placement of porta potties and a portable office. So those will require building permits. So certainly would still, the county be reviewing that. Lighting and security, uh, those are again addressed by sections of code um that require light to be cast downward. The conditions of approval include hours of operation between seven and five Monday through Friday uh with rock crushing limited to eight to four Monday through Friday. Uh, the applicant has pointed out that because this potentially has a a commercial demand component, it could be occasional Saturdays. Uh, I can recognize that some of the comments uh point out that we should probably better define what occasional means. Uh, I think that's entirely valid. We we could uh take advantage of condition thirteen that requires annual reports and that the community development director has the opportunity to request reports. Uh, I think that would be sort of a mechanism that we could take advantage of to to sort of force uh a schedule be submitted. And then uh dust control. So actual water for dust control, and again, dust control regulated by N D P. The the plan to attain water uh would take advantage of common ownership. Slide. Um, the applicant does own property there at the southwest corner of the subject parcel that is within the Lion County Utility District Service Boundary for Water. Uh, the applicant is obligated to work with the Lion County Utilities Director in order to um for his approval, a plan to source the water for dust control onsite. So moving into recommendations, um, with the uh with the the recommended conditions of approval, staff was able to make a recommendation of approval for the C U P to the planning commission at their meeting of October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the planning commission, however, did forward a vote of denial. Uh, their votes were split three to three, uh, which is technically a vote of denial. Uh, we did have one commissioner absent. And and the um, the the stated, on the record stated uh rationale for the nay votes uh were consistent with many of the comments we've. Uh, were consistent with many of the comments we've received. So it's direct impacts to highway fifty, directly taxed to the residents of Copper Canyon. Uh, related to noise and related to dust. Um, I I know you will have questions, so I'm available for them. I did want to point out the applicant has. Represent representatives here who have their own presentation, which I think fill in some of the blanks uh for the actual operation portion here. That I haven't touched on.
Commissioner Henderson, you have a question?
Uh, I have a few statements, actually, and and questions. Um. So I want to go to condition five. I can. Which talks about the daytime limit of sixty-five eight weighted decibels. What's that equivalent to? Well, yeah, what what is sixty-five decibels equivalent to?
Uh, looking at that online, that's equivalent to uh sort of the noise in in a restaurant. People talking in a restaurant.
Hey, excuse me, no comments. You'll have an opportunity to talk.
And then the you said the distance was eighteen hundred feet from the crushing operation, which is six hundred yards. So, so almost, okay, so that's, you know, six football fields, basically. Yeah, count the ends, those exactly. And um, yeah, noise does lessen it as it travels. Um, condition four. I just want to point out, it still says pit, I would recommend changing that language.
Yes, sir.
And then condition eight. It says uh on Saturday, a minimum of forty-eight prior to the extended hour, that should be forty-eight hours prior to the extended. Uh, and then I I'm really curious, and this may be a a question better addressed to the applicant, but. They own the land to the east of the, what what's the proposed evacuation, correct?
Excavation.
Yeah, excavation area, so I'm just wondering. They could move the processing, so these first, like, I I agree with. Mr. Hocky, I don't really care if people on highway fifty see the the plan or not. Yeah, so I mean, if it would move it further away from the residential development, that's something I would like to to. Address with the applicant, see if they would consider that. And that's all I have at this point, Mr. Pear, thank you.
Anything? Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
I might have missed this, Commissioner, thank you, Chairman, uh, I'm I'm gonna miss this. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, did you ask about putting the hours in on the occasional Saturday?
Ju- just a notification.
Oh, notification. Um, so I guess. On the occasional Saturday, I would, I mean, we can't run it twenty-four hours on Saturday, but we don't have that on there.
Uh, we can. Were there be a to be a recommendation that would include conditions, I think it's very reasonable to to amend the conditions to be clear.
Well, I would definitely, I mean, if we have hours of operation on Monday through Friday, why won't we have it on Saturday? As a condition, I mean, so just.
Yeah, no, I think the staff report includes a bit more information on that, but um admitting we we could have been more detailed in the condition of approval. Uh, to state the occasional Saturday would have.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you drop the ball, I'm just noticing that. We don't have hours on Saturday, and that would concern me.
Yes, sir, I think the the quotation is there would be the same working hours as the weekday hours.
Right.
Commissioner Keller.
I think, thanks, next.
I I did have a question about locating the screening operation, the crushing uh on the other side of the property. Is that in conflict with county code? Does our own code require a screen from the highway?
Uh, it. We have screening requirements for properties along highway fifty ninety-five A. But they are more focused on actual commercial development, not in this case, what is a temporary.
So that that is a possibility, then, moving it to the in the other direction?
I I'm not aware of any code that would prevent us from from that. I I do know the the location essentially for the operations was. Not just chosen because of the hill, but if you look at the topograph.
Yeah.
Topographic features are sort of saddle there, sort of a flatter area for the operation area, so that would sort of reduce the total disturbance on the on the site.
But the plan to excavate this entire hill is going to require a lot of big equipment, so I think. A flat area is not a problem. I was looking more at putting it between the two hills. Uh, which would be just to the west and east of the hill they're not removing, uh which would block it from residents. Okay, and would reduce the sound, because you then have approximately a forty-four hundred foot. Hill between them and the residents, but right now it's an eyeshot. It's fifty hundred feet. I mean, if you're sitting at your backyard looking at it, you're seeing the whole pad. And that pad, I've measured it, will fit down between the two hills and would be closer to the excavation area. You'd have all the mitigation factors looked at much better than they are where it's an eyeshot. And earshot. So, looking at this, I don't really care if the people driving on highway fifty see it. I don't care, but I do care if the people in the the residential area are looking at and hearing it constantly. So that's my concern, is why we can't put it down there closer to the operation and get a little bit more mitigation on that.
Chairman Hockaday.
Yes.
Um, thanks, sir. I I actually had the opportunity to tour this um. With uh our county manager and Mr. Hockaday. I appreciated that. Um, are we getting? Should we maybe have the applicant speak before them? They might give us reasons why or whatever, so. I'm not telling you how to run your meeting, but. Uh, that's, I would like to hear from the applicant before we go further.
And I think we were just kind of addressing the map here, but yes, I agree with you, Commissioner Anderson, you had another issue.
Ac- actually, I will hold my issue to ask the applicant.
Okay, so applicants time up?
Good morning. Is this working? Okay, there you go. Uh, good morning, Stacy Huggins, for the record, uh with.
I just make sure you look at once.
Oh, okay, yes. Okay, uh, Stacy Huggins was Wood Rogers, representing the applicant in this case. Um, appreciate um your questions, and I hope that appreciate you giving me a chance to. Come up here and try to answer some of them or give you some more information um from the applicant's side. Um, on this project, I won't, I'll try not to duplicate the same information that Lewis has already shared. Um, just so that I can get to some of the um points on this project. But I did want to just point out the land surrounding this project site, the public lands to the north and the west. Um, as well as the southwest gas-owned property directly to the east. Um, we are not um with this project. Uh, cutting off access to any of those um adjacent public properties surrounding the site. Uh, Louis talked about the specific plan and the zoning. Um, again, the specific plan created a long-term vision for how the property could be developed. You can see it there on the left and how the proposed project. Overlays within the specific plan, um the area in the middle or um to the south of the operations area on that map. Is a protected um knoll on the property, it cannot be disturbed. Um, and that's part of the reason we we located the um operations area by that, adjacent to the knoll that's um the subject of this. C U P. Um. This is really a temporary use, this, I mean, we're asking for a ten-year timeframe on this C U P. Only because we don't know what the demand will be to take the materials out of this um aggregate operation. Um, but it's um evident, or we hope that um as the Sage Vista Plan. Um, moves forward and develops this plan, as you as has been um identified in the plan. But someday there will be residential there, and this um knoll will have to be removed, whether it's through a tentative map or masquerading or through the C U P. Um, very briefly, on the current request, again, it is a conditional use permit for an aggregate extraction operation, the two areas. The aggregate extract area, the knoll, and also the operations area, it's approximately sixteen acres in. Um, total that would be disturbed as part of that project. Um, Louis mentioned the existing paved access um from highway fifty. As part of this project will improve the existing dirt road that connects to that pavement. Uh, with gravel that will help to reduce um dust from uh vehicles using the dirt road. Um, our traffic engineers did a very high-level analysis or generation on this. Uh, and we anticipate approximately fifty trips a day. It assumes eight trucks and five passenger vehicles entering and exiting twice a day during peak operations. I don't know that that would happen for ten years, but in a case where a project is under construction and materials are needed. That could be um a maximum number of trips we would anticipate. Uh, we talked about the hours of operation Monday through Friday, seven to five. Um, we did agree to um the additional language of rock crushing being limited to eight to four. Um, to answer your question about Saturdays, we um, we said that we, you know, in our application, we said we would notify the neighbors. Forty-eight hours prior to um a Saturday. Um. We assumed that the Saturday day operations would be similar to what we are asking for Monday through Friday. Um, so I'm happy to add additional language to the um condition if we need to clarify that. Uh, we talked a little bit about dust control, and I'll be more than happy, I have another slide that kind of digs into that a little bit more. Uh, but dust control will happen with onsite water trucks, and again, N D E P is the um agency that oversees that. Um, we have to meet their requirements. Uh, we do not anticipate any nighttime operations on this site. Again, those business hours are seven to five. Um. A little bit more specific detail about the extraction area. Um, it is approximately two hundred and sixty-four thousand cubic yards or eight point nine acres. Uh, our engineers did look at this area and design the site so that it would um essentially start on the north end. Um, of this um knoll area and slowly make its way to the south where it is the lowest point. The lowest point of that area outlined in blue there on the right uh is um elevation four thousand four thirty-one. We will not go any further than that, this will not be a hole in the ground. The intent is to make this of, again, a flat pad. It's earthwork-ready for future development associated with the residential. Um, we are requesting ten years to fully remove the hole, as um staff mentioned, and and this is noted in the conditions of approval. Um, annual reports to community development detailing the material extraction um is a requirement. Um, and I mentioned again, this area will support single-family residential um as identified in the specific plan. I also just want to note that there's been some discussion about um commercial uses versus the private uses. We wanted the flexibility to allow these to be, this material to be used um for other projects, but honestly, we anticipate that. The majority of the material coming out of this knoll will be for the applicants, other projects, this project and other projects within the valley. It's not their sole intent to sell this material um to other people. Um, but we certainly wanted to have that flexibility in case there are other developers in the valley that need material. Um, and this reduces trucks having to come from outside the valley. In terms of the operations area, um, we did strategically locate that behind that knob. Um, I mentioned that's the area that's specifically um identified as open space in the specific plan, it cannot be um removed. Um, so we definitely can't show any or do any sort of disturbance um close to that open space area. The materials from the extraction area will be transferred into the operations area for processing. Um, once they're there, there will be a pre and a post stockpiling of material in this fenced area. Um, you'll have the pre-stockpiling, it's there in the green box on the screen. The rock crushing equipment there in the middle of the red, and then the post-stockpiling um in the two purple boxes. And the rock crusher was intentionally located in between those areas to help reduce um some of the impacts that could be. Um, um, some of the impacts of that use on the adjacent properties. Uh, I want to just mention that, you know, similar to other rock crushers, these, this material or this operation or equipment, sorry. Um, will include uh water sprayers on it to help mitigate for dust control up there. I mentioned the dust control associated with the aggregate um operation, the roads, the operations area will all have water. On them to make sure that the dust from um any movement inside the fenced area um is also mitigated and reduced. Um, just focusing a little bit more, wh- why, why is the operations area where it is? Um, I had our engineers um pull this map for me to show the real topography, and unfortunately, that box in the middle makes it a little bit. Maybe a little bit hard to get the whole grasp of it, but when you look at the operations area where we've located it there. Um, it's really in a saddle, and I I I believe that um staff mentioned that um in their discussion as well. Um, the area around that is um. Uh, and steep enough that it would significantly increase the disturbance and creating effort that it would take to move the operations area. Could we move it? Yes, we certainly can move it, as you asked, Commissioner Hockday, um, but it would have an impact. On the ground. Um, but we we are happy to have that discussion um if necessary. Um. In terms of other impacts related to the project, what about the noise from the crushing crushing equipment? You know, any new development has the potential to create um impacts on the surrounding area. Um, we have, while Lyon County's code limits daytime maximum noise level to sixty-five D B A. Um, measured at the shared property line, as you can see here, and as I mentioned earlier, the shared property line is approximately eighteen hundred feet. From this location. Um, I have worked on other rock crushing projects and noise studies have been done. That show that um rock crushers, the noise level ranges from fifty-three point nine. To eighty-two point five D B A. When the nearest residential use is eight is fifteen hundred feet from the property line. The daytime noise level is projected at fifty-four point four D B A. That's significantly less than what is allowed by Lyon County Code. And for your comparison, um, the noise study or the acoustical analysis. Analyst, sorry, um, told me that's comparable to a refrigerator running at that distance of separation. They are the experts, I have a hard time questioning them. They were not asked, we were not required to provide a noise analysis for this project. But I have done other products, um, and I um believe have trust in the information that they've provided to me. Um, on a, on a similar comparison level. The last issue I want to talk about is dust from the wind. Um, again, we know that there's wind. We're definitely not saying there isn't wind and that it doesn't blow from every direction on occasion. Um, but the predominant wind direction in Dayton is often from the west, as you can see on the graphic on the screen. Um, I did reach out to National Weather Service in Reno to ask them for any wind data. Um, they didn't have any sensors in the area, so they weren't able to give me specific information. But they directed me to this um, this website and this graphic. Um, and they felt it was very uh reasonable to um, you know, show how the wind blows um in the Dayton area. Um, we anticipate based on this, um, that the residents to the in the adjacent Copper Canyon project. Um, could have some dust on the rare occasion that the wind does not blow from the west, but as you can see, again, the dominant wind is from the west. And um, we do not expect that the um dust from this project will blow their way. That summarizes my presentation. Again, the long-term vision of this of this project and the applicant and the Sage Vista. Um, specific plan is to develop residential here. This is just a first step in achieving that goal. Um, we believe all the legal C um C U P findings have been made, um, and we've, we agree with all the conditions.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and and thank you for the information. Um, I do have a few questions. When when I first started this project, I thought it was just for project one. To take material as they needed it, so it would not be a full-time operation. And now we're here, there may be a commercial aspect to it. And in in the in your uh thing, it says the applicant anticipates eight to ten employees operating the facility with four or five employees. On time, full-time, on-site, full-time. So is this going to be a uh five-day-a-week operation or an as-dead operation? I'm confused about that.
I wanted to make sure you were done with your question before I interrupt you. Um, I. I would anticipate it it could be a mix of both. I don't want to say, well, I I don't want to say it's not going to be full-time, because if they had a project. That needed materials, um, and they could have people on site five days a week. They would, and they would take the materials that they need for that project during that timeframe. If they don't have a need to have materials, then they likely do not have full-time. If they don't have a need to have materials, then they likely do not have full-time staff on working at the expedition site.
And that's where the commercial side kind of bothers me. Because that would increase the amount of people who are actually working on the site. So that, 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 that's the concern to me. The location of, of the processing plant is also, that, that needs to move. You know, I don't know why you would design something where you have a pit and then you're gonna put your crushing operations closer to a neighborhood. That just makes absolutely no sense, especially when you own enough land to move it other places and, and give them some more. Uh, some more distance and time. I'm not really concerned about the dust control. I think you have that covered. One thing on decimals, I looked it up real quick, uh, sixty decimals is normal conversation, dishwashers. Seventy, seventy decimals is traffic and vacuum, so it's, it's not like um, a hundred decimals, which is a snowmobile. Okay, so it's not that, it's not as loud as people are making it out to be. But that, that's the concerns I have, that the, the number, the hours of operations, especially the potential for them to be increased by the commercial operations and the location of the plant. That really needs to move. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, I'll probably have more comments later after hearing from the public, but I, I'm just going over what I'm looking at is I understand it. I, if I, if I owned one piece of property and it had a bunch of dirt and I needed the dirt at the other piece of property, I can understand it. But the commercial side of it creates a lot of problems with me. Uh, there you got one owner that's responsible for the whole thing, especially the traffic and everything else that's coming off there. I don't want to be complaining to all the other contractors in the world that are cutting me off. I want to have one owner to go to and be responsible for the whole thing. Uh, Saturday operations, I don't even see why you need them at all. That's why I, I look at it. To me, the people that are out there have time to spend with their family and Saturday mornings is not the time to get up and listen to anything or even, because the trucks, everything else there, everything's gonna make noise. Right? Uh, maybe not the crushing itself might not be a lot of whatever, but I, I just don't see why you need a Saturday, especially if you're stockpiling stuff. Yeah, I, I just don't see it. Um, this is a, you're asking for a tenure uh, timeframe and to me, that's like, do you need the dirt now or I, I don't like that open tenure. To me, that duration is too long. If you need it for a project, I think you should be able to remove it and move it over. But to me, that, that I have a little bit of problem with that. And uh, on the N D E P.
I do not want comments from the audience during any comments from any of the people here. So let's keep it civil and we'll have a, a, a good public comment session. That should be enough warning at this point. So let's open it up to public comment. What I'd like you to do then is line up where we can see so we can keep it moving. And, and I don't have to, we don't have to wait for everybody to get up and walk forward and we'd like to keep it, as I said, moving along. Okay?
This list over to that table so that the person that's going next can sign in.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you, County Manager. That you get the big bucks for. Okay. Alright. Yep, please print your name and also when you get up to the podium, state your name for the record so that we'll get it on r- record and, and the minutes.
Did I make a comment while we're waiting?
Yes, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Keller, please hold on the noise and audience. Uh, it doesn't take any noise to stand it. Sign up. Uh, Commissioner Keller.
So one of the things that I, when we got all your emails, uh, I started making a list of, of what your concerns were all the way through and I find that the same topic is being hit quite a bit. It's like five items. So if you got anything new, please, please work on that. I don't want to hear the same thing over and over because it's not going to be real productive. So I did look at every one of your things. I made a list of everyone. I got all your names. So when I come election time, I'll send you all the email. So.
I, I want, I want for the record, that is the first reference to the twenty-twenty-six election and a different Commissioner Keller, so.
Okay, state your name for the record and go ahead and make your comment.
Um, and I do appreciate uh, uh, what you said, uh, Commissioner Keller, and um, I do have a long email that I'm not going to read. So I am going to just hit a couple of points that I wanted to make and then address some, some questions that I have had since the presentations. Um, so the first thing that I would want to state first and foremost is that um, industrial and residential land use just do not mix. Um, so from that pers- perspective, one thing that, that we have heard here, that we understand that there's going to be a lot of dust kicked up, we know that. But what we haven't addressed there is the health issues that are addressed as a result of that. I wanted to make sure that we point out that airborne particulate matter uh, and increased dust and silica in the air do become health issues for long range down the road. And it doesn't matter which way the wind is blowing, so I wanted to address that. So some of the respiratory issues that we might see is increases in asthma, bronchitis, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, silicosis, lung cancer, tuberculosis. And these are the sort of things that we're not going to see for five to ten years down the road. Even if that project is now reduced to a three or a five-year with extensions. So I wanted to make sure that that gets addressed. Um, when it comes to Highway fifty traffic health, okay, so right now we do have a two-lane ride there that's coming off of there with a cattle guard. Congratulations, that's gonna have to be expanded for industrial traffic use. Um, so to think that that's ready to go, that's not ready to go. Um, the next thing that I would talk about is noise impact. We understand the decibels, we get that. We understand that you guys as, as commissioners are looking at how do we mitigate the circumstances? But one of the questions that I have is we're talking about the crushers, but what about the blasting noise? What about the, the, any kind of noise that may be coming from the extraction and, and the leveling of that, that knob itself? Um, so that's one of the things that I haven't heard addressed. Um, also too, the noise impact, long, long, uh, 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 exposure to, to consistent noise is identified as uh, from the World Health Organization as something that does create impact on health and I want that addressed as well. Um, the next thing that I would talk about is, the other thing that we haven't talked about is truck noise. We also talk about alarms and backup noise um, and industrial truck noise that has to be addressed as well. Um, we did talk about hours of operation, but in regards to that, we don't necessarily know how those hours of operations are going to be impacted um, uh, for early morning and during the, the evening hours. Um, the other thing we haven't talked about here is the uh, effect of on our property values. Lastly, the last, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is what about the integrity of our housing itself when it comes to the vibration of what's going to be happening on those lands? Thank you for your time.
Morning. My name is Jennifer Mapo. I also live in Snow Lane in Copper Canyon. I appreciate you hearing my comments today. I have written an email, so I will just be brief. Um, I'm a combat disabled veteran. I have an environmental disease that I obtained from the burn pits in Iraq. I am concerned that this uh, dust and the wind does blow very hard where we live and it comes from every direction. I am um, I'm very concerned about my health. I'm also concerned about the truck traffic. Turning left from Bryce onto Highway fifty is hard enough as it's, um, I go to the uh, Dayton Valley Dog Park all the time. There's a processing plant near there that's very uh, close within the uh, parameters that were gone over today. I can hear the rock crusher all the time from the dog park and the trucks that pull out from that adjacent street onto Dayton Valley Road are constantly cutting off traffic and um, creating a lot of dust in the air. So those are my concerns. I'm also concerned about my neighbors and my property values. Thank you very much.
My name is Julia Tamanavell. And I did send a, a letter in also. And, but my biggest concern is my grandparents, there's six of them. And one of them special needs and he's had a holes in his heart that, that he's had open heart surgery on. I'm just concerned with all the stuff that might be coming over, especially the dust in it, but I agree with what they have said big too. And also the property value. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sam Sander. Uh, I also sent you uh, an email about my concerns. Uh, the only thing I would like to add to this is that, um, well, I walk my dog out there in the back area, probably at least three miles every day. I just enjoy the nature and tranquility and everything after. Uh, since walking the dog, I was bringing my GPS and I mark everything I found that was interesting out there. And the those two hills that we're talking about, um, there are, are arrowheads out there and I know they're not enough of people out. So uh, is that a concern? Whether there's been artifacts out there in the area? That's my question. Um, hopefully you will see it as being in my view, so.
Good morning, Amanda Bernard. Um, I'm still just a little confused on, in one area. This is in the suburban character district and twenty-twenty it was approved in Sage Vista for suburban seven thousand square foot lots as general area. So I'm, I'm still confused on why the requirements for rural areas are being used and not suburban areas, which wouldn't allow this kind of operation. Also, I did reread the twenty-twenty plan that was submitted and nowhere in there does it mention an aggregate extraction operation, which I, I feel like it should have. Um, it kind of seems like the applicant's trying to have his cake and eat it too. Um, no, I know this has been discussed a lot. I also researched it. It, I found many references where it exceeds a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen decibels and eighty-five is considered harmful to human health. The other issue is in colder weather, sound does travel farther. I live not far from Highway fifty and I can tell you, I can hear it in the winter. In the summer, I rarely hear it, but it does travel farther. The dishwasher references, et cetera, that's a short-term noise. This will be a long-term everyday noise, five days a week. And there's retired people that a weekend and a weekday are no different. So those noise impacts are very real to them. Um, the access roads, I, I, it seems like it says the, the, the apron's paved. I'm not sure if that access road will be paved or gravel, but there will be dust from this. Um, one thing that keeps being stated is that the winds are from southwest. We also have east slope winds in this area. Um, I have witnessed them. I caught fires, wildland fires, and the wind comes down, pushes that. So that's gonna push that dust right into Stagecoach Valley. That hasn't even been addressed. None of the residents or the advisory board are even aware of this project. So it seems like the continual references to the dust will go to Copper Canyon. Look at where it is going. So we have very big dust concerns from this area. Um, and also why aren't all the areas being watered? It seems like they should all be watered, it's not just some. And as was said, that this um, conditional use permit is not required to remove the knob. Um, the developer can do it without having this aggregate operation. So I'm The developer can do it without having this aggregate operation, so I'm not sure why this is needed. Traffic, I know that NDOT manages the traffic on Highway 50, but you will have a lot of slow moving, heavily laden, laden trucks pulling out into a high speed lane on Traffic 50. There is no lane for them to get up to speed. I've already had passenger vehicles that have pulled out in front of that road that I've almost hit. So, the other issue is weeds. There's going to be a lot of areas that are cleared. This is a magnet for noxious and invasive weeds. How will they control those, so with the wind, that we won't have even more weeds in Stagecoach Valley and in the Mark Twain area? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Wayne Rogers. Moved to Copper Canyon about 13 months ago. From wonderful Las Vegas, where all this is happening down there, so. I didn't realize I was walking into this, but a lot of these things have been covered, if you received my email prior to this meeting. A couple of things that weren't addressed, the, I'm, I live in Phase 1 of Copper Canyon, which is an older part of it. Phase 2 and 3 are just now completed. Some of these residents just moved in weeks ago. Do they think they expect a mining operation in their backyard? Because that's what this is, this is a mining operation. They're going to extract, they're going to process onsite and haul away for money. That is a mining operation. Zoned residential. I'm a little confused why that could even be acceptable. In addition, everything else has been covered, decibels, noise, so forth and so on, but nobody's mentioned the 150 ton trucks going up a dirt road they claim to maintain. How do you maintain a dirt road with 150 ton truck going 12 hours a day in and out? And then, approaching Highway 50, they're going to pull out with mud covered tires, and cars are going to come right into it. They're going to slam into it, it's going to be a traffic nightmare. How do you stop that? Who's going to be accountable for that? Who's going to be accountable? Who do we talk to if you approve this, any violations that they commit? Noise level, dust control, traffic control, highway concerns? Who do we call? You? We call the police? We call the county, we call him. Because I know if I call Lucas, they ain't going to answer the phone. One other thing I want to say, if this is approved, and they do this extraction, what's going to say that they don't come back, oh, we found precious minerals, we want to make a complete mining operation now? We want to, we want to strip mine this whole piece of property, forget the commercial development or the residential development. We lose, and they win. It's unacceptable. Please reject that. Thank you.
For the record, I'm Barney Wadley. I'm a Copper Canyon resident. I'm the past president of our Limited Purpose Association. I'm against this project, and have been since I heard about it. All of the rest of the people have already gone over the high points that you have in your emails, that whole stack of emails. I want to reiterate the, the five of you. This document right here, county manager won't allow me to hand this out to you. This is a letter from Carson Tahoe, COPD clinic. And it's one of our residents that wanted to be here today to testify, but she can't, she's on a nasal canyon 24/7. In this document, it states the health hazard to her and this gentleman sitting right back here with their COPD. When they moved in, they had no idea there was going to be a, an extraction pit with big, uh, stockpiles, trucks running in and out. The truck route on the map that he showed goes to the right, goes around, and comes back down. That road is going to be a loop. They're not going to go up, turn around up there and come down. They're going to go up, stockpile, which is all the heavy equipment, of course, and then come back down that road. Anywhere from, what, 10 to 50 trucks a day, and then out. Now, that's quality of life. And, uh, like you girl, guys and girls have said, you have to protect the public. Thank you.
Hi, commissioners, my name is Susan O'Brien, and I'm a resident of Phase 3 of Copper Canyon on Orderville Street. I agree with everything that's been said so far, so I'm going to pare it down, it's just a couple of items. One thing that wasn't mentioned by the planner regarding this CUP was that an option for, he said, well, you can either haul it off now under the CP or that knob's eventually going to have to be taken down with a mass grading permit and hauled away. Well, typically, a developer, when they grade a site for a project of the magnitude of Sage Vista, they will rebalance what they grade off of that knob to the site to minimize offhaul of the site, because that would save them money, obviously. So, I am just here because I'm speaking, nothing happened, me and my husband, that we would encourage you to deny this project, because it's not appropriate use for the site. Major concerns also are the commercial, which you've already mentioned, and the hours, Saturday hours. But it's definitely going to have adverse impacts on our community, so I appreciate if you could deny the project. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Scott Bennett. I did send in an email, so I'll just not confuse, I'll just add to it that I consider myself an authority on wind in Stagecoach Valley. It predominantly blows west to east, but it does blow every direction, not given occasions. It blows daily. On Sundays, at least two, three times a month, wind blows 25, 30 miles an hour. And if you're not standing in your backyard with a pair of goggles and a dust mask on, you can't get inside. So my, my point is, the dust on the road they're going to water doesn't concern me. It's the dust they're going to kick in the air that's going to be floating around in the atmosphere. And when one of those storms comes by, makes it to Stagecoach in 10 minutes, it'll be Silver Springs in a half hour. It'll make it to Fallon in about an hour, so everybody in that valley is going to be affected by this project if it's approved. So, needless to say, I agree with everything and everyone has said, and I would like you to please politely tell them no. Thank you.
Ruben Terriss for the record, thanks for staying during the lunch hour, commissioners. I, I agree with all my neighbors, so I, I'm just going to make sure. There's one thing that does bother me is that 10 year commitment, if that's what it's going to be. If, if I'm, I'm thinking maybe if this does go through, it should be one year increments. It goes back to you folks, and I, I don't want it, I don't like the dust factor, but, you know, I guess it's up to you, it's in your hands, so I'd ask you to vote no, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ralph Corsi, I live at Copper Canyon, and I've already sent you guys an email, you've already got it, so I'm just going to be real brief. The only thing that really worries me also is the 10 year issue. Like, the three year was a lot better. And if they move it more in an easterly direction, we were talking about before, that would, that would help out. But, of course, I'd rather not be there. Alright, thanks a lot.
Henry King, I agree with the president for me, they've done a great job. Thanks.
Good job.
He's my favorite.
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Stolliver, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity to present my arguments, I, I oppose this. I sent an email, believe it, everybody's seen my email. Most of the points have already been made, similar. I just have a couple of other things, like observations. There is a processing plant 10 miles away, I'm not sure if it's identical. It sure seems to have a lot of the same products. Most of those trucks go to Person City instead of going out to date, so I don't know what you know, the need, particularly if it's a commercial operation. From the sounds of it, there won't be a lot of commercial development going on for the next few months anyway, from the discussion this morning. If they start this, it's only going to be for commercial operation, leaving Dayton County, leaving Dayton area, adding traffic to 50, which we already have enough problems there. There've been a number of, you know, fatalities, different kinds of things, until safety is improved on 50, adding more truck traffic to it, doesn't make sense to me. I think it's probably one of the most dangerous roads at six mile stretch between, uh, foot, uh, Churchill, six mile drive and stop sign. It's probably per capita one of the most dangerous roads in the valley. If you look at the number of people living there, the number of serious accidents and fatalities. Well, thank you for your time.
Hi, commissioners, I'm Kim Vidoni for the record, and I sent an email, so you have my comments. And I agree with everything that all of my neighbors have said, and the only thing I want to add is that we vote, so.
Hi, I'm Janice Danforth, I agree with everything including that. I have a couple of things I wanted just to state, as far as quality of life. We moved there as retired people to enjoy our neighborhood, and now we get up in the morning, we go for a walk, and it's a beautiful day. Now we're going to walk back door, and we're going to see that plant. And it's not conducive for our environment. We didn't purchase this property to experience that. In addition, in the evening, we're going to lose what I call our dark skies, because they're going to have that lit up. We won't be able to see our stars. So, those are trivial things, I understand, but they're important to us. In addition, once they level that knob, if they don't do anything to it, then when we have our flash floods, it's going to roll away. There is a little creek bed between the two knobs, and it'll all flow in there. Perfect. Not a good idea. In addition, we talked about, everybody's talked about dust and noise. What about odor pollution? In their proposal, they said they were going to put in an aggregate pit. Nice, I want to smell that, right? So we need to say no to this, because I don't want to smell that. The winds, they say, blow our direction, so we're going to smell that. We're going to smell the portlets, it's not going to be pretty. In addition, if they do have 10 year contract, who's to say, like that other rock pit, that they don't expand? I don't want it. You know, that's not really appropriate. Also, uh, we do have flood control in through there, and I feel like if they take that off, it's going to completely change that drainage. So there's a lot of other things to think about than just dust and noise. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brad Stevens, and I'm coming to you as a professional truck driver retired, and I hauled out a rock pit for 20 years. And I got to tell you, there's going to be a lot more truck noise than you expect. What do you do when there's a big job to say traditions down the road once 25 truckloads? Six o'clock in the morning when the plant opens, there's going to be 25 trucks sitting out on the road on the highway, waiting to get in, be the first ones to load, and get to the job site. Second question I have, are the stockpiles go? Where are they going to stockpile all the material? Because you can't go up to the, to the rock crusher and load, there's not enough material, got to be moved to a stockpile. But when you do that, you're going to have trucks all through the yard waiting to load. And then you're going to have loaders dropping 40 tons of rock into a metal can. Anybody take a dustmall reading on that? It's a lot louder than what they're saying. It's destiny. So, and then everybody else covered the traffic, so I'm good there. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I want to say thank you for your attention and your care and your concern and your service. My name is Robin Bennett, I live in Stagecoach, just directly to the east of where that project's going to be, and like I agree with everyone else, my concern is about the dust, and, um, so I agree with what everyone else is saying, and I'd like to add that if the project goes forward, I would like a condition of the permit to be that they plant some evergreen trees around the perimeter as windbreak, and it would assist with noise, assist with dust, and I think it's a better use of the water. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica Neves, and I live in Copper Canyon, and I agree with what everyone's been saying today. But one of my concerns, you had as well, was the 10 year thing. I'm like, how long does it take to take a knoll down? 10 years? Seems like an awful long time as well, if this was to go through. I don't want it to go through, but, because I have all the same concerns as everyone else. And one of the other concerns I had that I didn't hear was the disruption or displacement of our wildlife. That was one of the reasons we, we liked the area. We just retired last year. And it's quiet, I like to breathe the fresh air, I don't want to get sick from it. So, yeah, and then, you know, everything else. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Gary Leeson. I've got the closest to this project to be on, on Moab Lane. My wife and I both have COPD, my wife has worse breathing problems than I do. All this silicon coming in, what do I do? Duct tape all my windows? Where, okay, I do like to barbecue. What time do I schedule the barbecue? It's going to be very difficult, not only for me, but my whole neighbors. I am against this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Pete Neves, I live in Copper Canyon, I want to thank you for having me, this discussion. The, I also drove trucks for many years. The backup noises, the alarms from the equipment are way more than 65 decibels. They're piercing loud, high pitched sound, they just travel. That makes excessive noise that nobody's talking about. The trucks in and out were talked about, and, but, it's we bought this house last year because we retired, and it's peaceful and quiet out there. Nowhere, anywhere did I read or was told that there was going to be a gravel quarry. That's what they want to, you know, it's not a pit, it's a gravel quarry. So they want to quarry all the gravel out of there in a 10 year frame. It should be, if you're going to just make houses there, which was the original concept from what I take from the plan, it wouldn't take you 10 years to level out that whole area to plan out the housing. They're going to get rid of the rock, but then they're going to be, uh, gravel, they're going to need dirt to level the facility back up, so that'll be, again, another set of equipment coming back in, in the future, whenever they decide to do this. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you, and I want to thank everybody who's here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Hardcastle, I live in Copper Canyon as well. I won't belabor it. I agree with all of my neighbors here, and I respectfully request you decline the permit.
My name is Ward Isks, uh, I've lived in Copper Canyon for eleven years, one of the first homes of phase one. Um, it would seem to me that Loop's development has a lot of other options, but obtain their aggregate. They are currently starting to cross from the, the Plains Casino, East Fifty Bar. And the way I understand it, wrapping around and come back to backup Chavez. Now in Chavez, they were going to do some light commercial dentists, convenience stores, whatever. If you look there in the south side of Highway fifty, there's a mound, there's a knoll, a hill. That they're going to have to level when they do the development in there. This three-legged problem of dust, noise and traffic can be solved if they do their aggregate op- operation on the south side of fifty. Rather than on the north side. They can obtain the gravel, have the commercial and the traffic problem goes away because the trucks are entering fifty, they're already on a south side of Highway fifty. Traffic's, uh, problem solved, thank you.
Hi, my name is John Virchell, um, thank you for letting us be here today to address you. Um, I've been in that valley for thirty-two years now. And there's mining operations on the north side, it's mining operations down by the river. Um, I don't see where we have any need for new mining operation and that's what this is turning into. It's, they could develop the property. As outlined with your rural residential, but I don't see the need for them to go on into. Another mining operation. The dust and stuff, the M Shaw gets involved because you sit there in this valley at times after the lens float. And just see the dust pouring in the air there. So it's not just, uh, it's going to blow east or west, so that's all I have to say, thank you for your.
Very glad, well, um, I'm not dissenting with everybody's speech comments here. Just want to point something out, you know, if you allow them to do an aggregate that, that and extract the materials. It's going to be more highly regulated under M Shaw rules. It'll be more highly regulated under M Shaw rules than it would under construction rules. They're setting later dates or later times to extract the aggregate eight to five is what I'm hearing. If they go and develop this piece of property under development agreement, they're going to be working there from seven to five or seven to six. There's restrictions on construction, they're still going to have to take the same amount of material out of there. In order to develop that property, so this is just something that everybody needs to look at. The material needs to come out to develop that piece of property, they can do it and make money doing it or. Be more highly regulated while doing it, or it can be uncontrolled in the future. And, you know, be careful what you wish for when you come up here and ask for something, because it could be worse in the future, that's all I have to say.
Uh, my name is Mike Bryan, I would appreciate such as talk, uh, got three points, I'm not the naive copper candy. But it seems like the developers trying to get something to the back door instead of front. Because we knew there was house coming, we knew there was commercial coming, we didn't know this. Number two, closest house to that rock crushing machine is five football, there's going to be noise. If this Hendricks do vote.
Okay, looks like we have completed the in-house comments, we do have some Zoom comments, it looks like a Chris Gonzalez. You want to unmute? Mister Gonzalez, if you want to unmute. Um. Mister Gonzalez, can you hear me? If you. You don't have any comments, take your hand down. All right, we'll move on to Brad Parker. Please unmute yourself and you've got three minutes soon as I see you unmuted, go ahead.
Hi there, thank you so much, uh, my name is Brad Parker, I live in Copper Canyon. Um, I have a six-year-old son. Um, there are kids that live in this neighborhood as well, that would be affected by both the, uh, noise and dust pollution in the area. Uh, I want to echo the comments regarding the stars and the horses that live in the area. That would be displaced from this, um, I was in Yarrington, uh, at the meeting, but then drove back home. Um, to join the Zoom and I drove right past where the site would be located and. You can see, like, you can see into the neighborhood right from, uh, right from the knoll, like, it's, it's super close. Um, I'm nervous about that. And. I do work, I work from home, uh, mostly. But I do like to work, uh, from my backyard, I don't want to be impacted by that dust and noise while I'm working. Uh, it's one of the reasons why I moved out here is because of, you know, the, the nice area, the beautiful scenery. And the tranquil nature of where I live out in the country. Um, I encourage a no vote and I thank you for your attention on this situation. I relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you, uh, we'll move to Larry Young.
Hi, good morning, yeah, my name's Larry Young, excuse me, I live on Snake River Court, Copper Canyon Estates. We already have a mining operation northwest of us within three quarters of a mile. When the wind blows, which is most of the time, we get excessive dust. This greatly affects persons in this home with COPD. Now I want you to, now you want to approve another mining operation less than a quarter mile northwest of my house. With only desert between my house and this proposed operation. Quite often we get winds from the northwest, which will create additional dust. And noise, which will also, also affect our quality of life as application is approved. One question I want to know is, what is the definition of occasional Saturdays? You just approved an ex- expansion of a mining operation. And just, uh, just a few minutes ago, can you assure us that you will not approve another expansion requested? This operation will negatively affect the quality of life as well as property values of the residents of Copper Canyon Estates. I ask you to please do not approve this application.
Thank you, uh, Mister Gonzalez, are you able to try again?
Yeah, I apologize commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
So I, I'm here, I do not live in Copper Canyon, however, I have lived in Dayton for about ten years. And I am more concerned about the compliance to code. I, I don't know if you guys received my email, but I did send one in, I did not see it in the backup materials. But basically you, you have your findings, right, and I know you guys know this, but I just want to make it clear that. The findings are your teeth and I feel like the documents provided by the, 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 um, applicant. Basically just went over finding A. And only addressed things that were positive pertaining to the project. And I'm going to read finding A, the proposed use at the specified location is consistent with the policies embodied in the adopted master plan. And the general purpose and intent of applicable district regulations. I, I, it really boggles my mind why, um, we allow people to get up and say that the master plan is not a regulatory. Um, piece of document when I am, I hope that the county code is regulatory. And in the county code, part of the findings is in there and it, finding A specifically calls out for. Um, consistency with those policies. One of those policies that wasn't addressed and I would love it to be addressed. Is policy LU one point four, locate industrial development as designated on countywide land use plan or determined by criteria. The master plan states, industrial uses, including extractive industries, will occur in areas that are designated on the land use plan. New industrial uses should only be located in areas that do not adversely impact existing residential statements, settlements, I apologize. The problem with finding A is that you cannot mitigate finding A. Finding A is something you either abide by or you don't abide by it. This aggregate. Sand and gravel extraction and process plant does not abide by finding A, nor does it abide by finding B as well. As finding B states that. The pro- proposed use is compatible with the character and integrity of adjacent development and neighborhoods. Period. And I apologize, I didn't mean to yell, but there is no compatibility with the character integrity. Of the adjacent development of Copper Canyon with an industrial use. Aggregate sand and gravel extract, extraction and processing plant. Those are my main points.
It's, your turn, it's your turn. Thank you for your comment. Uh, page two for Zoom, do you have any further Zoom comments? Okay, seeing none without the applicant come back up, I think we have some questions. Uh, first, first question was raised by a public comment, I will, and I had it written down here. Um, you know, we're talking about the operating hours and. A lot of these operations, the operating hours are basically when you open the gate and you close the gate. That's great, except that you have mechanical devices being repaired, noises being made. This, to me, your operating hours is, that's when you make the noise. After that, you're not out there beating on trucks or beating on your equipment. So there shouldn't be anything after that, whereas I know many operations, it just goes on, they say, well, we got to have this done by midnight. We got to have trucks in here and be ready at three in the morning, that can't happen.
Chair, I appreciate your comment, um, we, uh, agree with that, um, those operating hours limiting and no work happening outside of. Um, that also ties directly to the rock crushing hours that, that gives rock crusher some time to get started within. Um, those hours of operation and before that end time, um, that we're agreeing to or that we're asking for. Um, so we, we, we agree to not operate outside of those operating hours, um, that we've proposed. Um, I also want to, if, um, you will just let me, um. You know, we've, we've heard all of the discussion, we heard you all earlier, um, we are willing to, um, eliminate the Saturday operations entirely. From our request, um, in an effort to mitigate for that concern as well as eliminating the potential for commercial operations.
Commissioner Keller. So that something else I was brought up and maybe you could just tell us how the operation works stuff, but, uh. Trucks coming off of the property onto the road, uh, as far as mud and gravel and stuff like that, because we really don't want a lot of that popping up. So if you could address that, um. I think everything else, I, I'm still going to go back to the, the length of this. And, uh, that, that's concerned and, uh, maybe you could talk on that a little bit.
Sure, I'll tackle your first question first about the essential trackout. Um, trucks often in, um, use of like this, there is, uh, what you call a track out, track in, right? So trucks have to go over dirt or in this case, there's an existing cattle barn, which will collect that material off the trucks. So that they do not drive that material out onto the road, um, that is standard practice. Um, that will not, um, approve us taking any sort of mud out onto the road. Um, so I, I'm, there are regulations that have to be followed to make sure of that, um, if you wanted to. Add some language that confirms that we, um, will make sure there's track in, track out, um, addressed, we can do that.
I just don't want to get rock chips and stuff like that flying up and I don't want the mud and.
We can only mitigate that so much, right, occasionally there might be a rock that's on the road, um, so I, but we will do.
I just should have mitigated as best as possible, I, I'll, I'll talk later, but that was.
Did you have another question about the timeframe?
Yes.
Um, I, again, appreciate the conversation before we took the break, um. I would ask, um, for five years still, I, I appreciate your concern for three, I, um, five years particularly given. The current state of the moratorium, um, in the Dayton Valley area, um, five years just gives enough time. For this process to start and enough material to be taken out and moved to the other sites that the developers in the valley. Um, we'd be happy to come back after five years and, um, try to ask for an extension on the CUP, um, if that's appropriate.
Or, or you could word it three years from the start of the. Project, in other words, you're not doing anything now, three years from the start to the end or whatever, it doesn't matter to me, but I do want it to be constrained to. A bit because I don't know if they're going to be able to start right away or if it's going to be a year before they can even do something, so I don't want to go into that. I do want to, well, I'll wait till you're done.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mister Chair, um, a couple of questions and it. And I want to make an observation, I think it's a little bit different on the timeframe. If we compress the timeframe, you're going to have to have more operations to get it done, you're going to have more, more compact operations, so. I mean, I, I'm with five years, I wouldn't want to see it any less because we're going to force you to work harder and make more noise and make more dust. Uh, I think we can condition this to where you could address the concerns of the dust and the noise. Um, I heard a comment about a hundred and fifty ton trucks, I didn't see that anywhere in your proposal, that you were going to put a hundred and fifty ton trucks on the site? Uh, that just doesn't make sense to me, that knob's going to come out one way or another, correct?
And I do not believe that we have analyzed the type of truck or the size of truck that will, um, move the materials off of that site.
Well, you can't, you can't put a hundred and fifty truck on the road.
Again, not my expertise, uh, I, I hear you and I appreciate it.
Eighty, eighty thousand pounds, eighty-two if it's electric.
The other thing, I'm sorry, could I just very quickly, because I, I forgot to mention this, um. We will move the operations area to be adjacent to the, um, aggregate, um, area. So, um, as opposed to where it is now, we have talked about it during the break and we're happy to move it so that it is directly north of the extraction area.
I, I think that solves a lot of problems, I really do, um, and then just, there, there was a comment about odor, I'm not sure what kind of odor you'll be generating.
I'm not aware of any unless it comes from the diesel trucks.
Okay, and, and, and the, um, you know, the, the concern about wildlife and stuff. Wildlife has used them where Copper Canyon is now, so that's kind of a, yeah, yeah, and, 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 yeah, all, all, all these developments, right? People who moved into phase one, they get upset when you start on phase two and then phase two, people there, they get upset when you start on phase three, everywhere I live. Yeah, I, I knew when I bought the house, there's going to be more construction, I used to have a beautiful view, you know, well, there's a house block in it now, but I knew that was coming, so. I, I don't, I don't quite get that and then, um. And does project one own another gravel crushing plant?
Um, I did ask that question and I, the answer was they were not aware of the gravel pit that was mentioned.
Okay, and I certainly appreciate, um, your willingness to work with us on getting rid of Saturdays. And, uh, and the, the, the lighting effect, we, we, we have an order, it's the lights have to face down, so it really shouldn't affect the stars, so. Uh, that's all the comments I have, Mr. Chair.
For lighting, if I may, it, we, because we don't plan to have nighttime operations, the only lights associated with this will be for security purposes.
Right, and they will be facing.
Face them down, but, thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick.
The length of time is still an issue for me because five years is too long for people to, to, to deal with it. I, I would have to have it at three years or I'm going to have to vote against it.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman, um, uh, I appreciate it, um. I'm guessing that a close knit community probably got a little closer through. I'm guessing that a close knit community probably got a little closer through this process, so that's a plus. Um. So, I, I appreciated what Mr. Gladwell did say about regulations. Um, and, and this kind of goes with that. How long do you anticipate the mound is coming down, one way or the other? How long? In a construction phase, is it going to take to remove that mound as opposed to the plan that you have to get rid of it and disperse it?
I am not a hundred percent sure the answer to your question.
Right, so in a construction phase, it could be quicker or could be.
Certainly be quicker if we were doing it uh as, as a part of an earthwork. Um, tentative map masquerading exercise could be two years because it would have to be faster. We would have to have trucks regularly moving on the site to make it happen.
And that's less regulated. Um. So. I guess if you. So the, I, I, I agree with um the timeframe on this, I, ten years, I had that. That was my first thing I, when I read through the packet, was going through that, ten years. Uh, I'm probably not gonna be alive in ten years, um, but.
You will.
Well, maybe, unless there's something go, happens to me out in a parking lot. But, uh. But I, I do see the value in. Using this earth. For the, the best possible reasons. I'd like to see it get done quickly. And, um, I, again, I, I. I think. Be careful of what we ask for, was a good way to put it, more regulations we have on this, probably the. The less likely you're gonna have those concerns. So, this is a tough one, I do appreciate all the emails and everybody being here today. Um, I'm sure some of you took the day off of work and, and that is, that is noted as well, so. It's a tough one, uh, but I, but the ten years is, is simply too long.
Commissioner Keller.
So something that we have to kind of weigh in on. If they, if they're gonna have to move the dirt anyway, if they just, they have the right to use their property. Right, and we've already got a specific plan that says that that hill's coming, moving away. And right now they can get a grading permit and go out there and work and get it done, and they can haul it all off during the grading permit. It's just that, uh, they're not gonna have the crusher out there, so the only thing different between a grading and this would be the crusher. Uh, but by going through this process, we're, we're kind of regulating it a little bit better, it's better for the community, I think. Uh, as far as the trucks on the road, if they don't, for the other projects, if they don't get the dirt from there, which what I would do is take my own dirt. Uh, they're gonna get it out of Silver Springs, which is gonna be the same trucks going across front of you, probably out there off of Ramsey Wees. And increase more traffic in the valley, or they're gonna pull it probably out of Carson or the other places, increase traffic more. And the heavy traffic areas that we already have in Dayton. So there's no, no win situation on that. Truck traffic, I don't think, um. I just like the direction that we went with this, I'd like to bring it down, I like moving that stuff away from the community a little bit. Get it done in a faster rate of time, so that's my comments.
Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just, just one comment to address the traffic on and off fifty. And, and one, it's, it's not a cattle guard, it's actually a horse guard, it, there is a difference, believe it or not. Um, but, but in Endosletter, they, they point out that the existing access to US Highway fifty will require improvements to meet current standard of Endot. Access management systems and standards, which would be borne by the developer, so that, you know, Endos not gonna let you do it. Till you meet their standards, so I, I, I'm not as concerned about the ingress and egress. And that's in my comments.
Thank you. Um, having been out there and seen that hill, there looks like there's a solid rock core. What is your plans for getting rid of that solid rock core, once you get, once you get all the dirt away? Are you blasting? I don't understand how you would get rid of that, but you may have the answer to that, but it's certainly a concern for me in. Every aspect of removing a solid core of rock.
So, um, I'm not a geologic expert, um, our firm did do a geotechnical report on this property. And looked at the null specifically, um, I know that the null that's protected does have quite a bit of um exposed. Uh, rock on it, it's that, so we obviously are not touching that. Um, on the null that is the subject of this, um, they have said that, um, the, I think the study said. Um, down at approximately forty feet in the null, they would hit harder um material. They did not talk about needing blasting to get through that material, maybe a stronger piece of equipment that has to get through it, but not blasting per se. Again, I'm not, I apologize, I'm not a geotechnical engineer and I did not bring that to me today.
Damn. Any further questions? Nope, if not, then. We need to. Come up with the motion, oh, I'm sorry, we've already got public comment, you have.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do have a, a question for staff.
Okay, question for staff. Who's gonna come up and get in the hot seat now? And I do want to thank everybody for your courtesy today, it was, you behaved very well, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Carrillo. I've been trying to make some amendments to the conditions that would possibly there be something to look at.
Uh, say, say, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, that, that was, that was my question. Is can you incorporate everything into conditions that we can look at before we vote on this?
Uh, right now, I believe I have that prepared, I just need to, to email it to the county manager, we should be able to get it up on the screen. I'll. Um, whatever you want.
Maybe, maybe we can do ordinance on the wind and. Stop that too.
It's been long, it's a long meeting so far, I understand.
Just so you can, I know, we, we need, we need some lunch.
Uh, Commissioner Keller, he'd love to use the facilities at one eighteen.
Yeah, same one, same name, thirteen B staff.
Yeah. We're, he's about ready to go on the board.
Yeah, I just think for me.
We need to remove Saturday.
All right, we ready? Okay, we're, we are ready to put the conditions on the board.
Hey, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair. So I've attempted here to, um, to make some amendments as the discussion led us to. Um, and I'll try and walk through each of the proposed changes to the recommended conditions of approval. Um, the first three uh conditions were not actually proposed for any change. Uh, these are relatively standard conditions for CUPs and they direct applicants to have to follow the applicable code. Uh, also associated with entities outside line count, so that would be the state and the central line fire building department. Uh, codes, et cetera. Uh, the change to condition four is to the language here, so it doesn't say pit. Uh, you might recall, we do have a condition of approvals, uh, limiting the extraction to topographic uh level four thousand four hundred and thirty-one feet. Uh, so that again is just the, the, the null, the hill to be removed, no extraction to the ground. Okay, uh, so condition eight, all the language about Saturday has been completely removed. Uh, so now the hours of operation. By the box is making it difficult for me. I'll read it into the record, the hours of, of operation for all activities shall be limited to seven AM to five PM, Monday to Friday. Um, we did add the language of for all activities, that's intended to capture some of. Uh, Chair Hockaday's concerns about, you know, operations on site after the working hours. Uh, rock crushing activities are limited to eight AM to four PM. Uh, with the same daily limitations as our operations, uh, that might be redundant, but again, the intent is, is there. We, of course, have the opportunity to change these. Uh, we don't have any changes to conditions eleven and twelve. One thing that's notable here though, although we haven't made this change yet, is when we get to the timeframe for the operations. I'm not sure this condition, the last sentence, does state failure to initiate the conditional use permit in one year. And date of approval will result in the expiration of the conditional use permit approval. Uh, so let me just get to the next amendments, we're talking about timeframe, we'll see if that's gonna work. Uh, so no changes to, oh. Yes, so condition thirteen is the one that we mentioned that, uh, previously being a result of the planning commission hearing, that's where we added the topographic limit. Uh, condition fourteen is brand new here, uh, into the record, no verse of sales. Of extracted materials is authorized by this conditional approval. Approval granted for five years, and I know we have to talk about that, after five years, the applicant may request an extension from the Board of County Commissioners via amendment. Conditions of approval, that's where I think we're talking, we're, we're talking about three years.
Um, Chairman Hockaday.
Yes.
May I comment on fourteen?
Absolutely.
Um, thank you, Chair, um. So I guess. Well, it, dealing with this timeframe, um, in the presentation and in the map, they're starting on the north side of this mound, which is the higher, steeper. Side, and then they're working, having toured it, working towards the sloped. Down to forty, what, forty-four, thirty-one or what? Okay. It would seem like. Uh, assuming issues from earlier today get resolved and building resumes, which is everyone's hope, obviously, um. That where they're at, at the end of three years, the rest just gets worked into the grading of the project and the, and then it would turn into the construction phase. Aren't we on the lower end of that? Ms. Pansky's shaking her head no. So you might want to comment a moment.
Ms. Pansky, with project one for the record, so there are some other issues at play here at H Fista that may. Prevent us from starting construction there in a timely manner, we have to get through zone change, we have to get through competitive maps, we have to get through improvement plans. So I would really prefer that if we're gonna do three years or five years, that we have the ability to have extensions through. Coming back to this board at that time as opposed to just having it off completely.
Any other questions, all right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, we of course can continue to modify these as appropriate. Um, fifteen, pedal, our condition fifteen is entirely added. Again, for the record, the location of the operations area is only a per location to the north of the proposed extraction area. Not as depicted in the submittal materials. Mainly that language a little clumsy. But I think it is significant.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I'd also like to see a condition that as they remove sections of the hill, they put some kind of vegetation or something for dust control.
I. I'm sure, respectfully, sir, I believe that is come under the NDP permit. Um, so the, the stormwater construction permits as well as the air quality controller, surface air disturbance permits. Will from NDP have requirements for reclamation.
Okay.
Commissioner Keller.
I just got. Got a question about, uh. On all CUPs. They can always come back for extension, right?
It can, so, uh, title fifteen does, uh, state. That were the authorized use from a conditional use permit to cease for the period of it one year. Uh, then that authorized use is terminated, and that the applicant has to come forward. In the same process, go, we could do the Board of County Commissioners for an extension or new approval, yes, sir.
Right, but, but to have, so what I don't want to say is after five years, uh, the way you have it on this. You're, you're kind of giving them like an automatic extension, uh, and I don't want it to even come across like that, do you see what I'm saying? I want it to be, uh, because it's a whole new process, it's come back and. And it's already there. So why, why would we even have it on?
I don't know how we can change this.
It can always come back for. Extension.
Right. So we're saying straight back or?
No, just. That's just an informational thing, that, that, that last sentence. After five years, that may request an extension from the Board of Commissioners, they can always do that. We see what I'm saying.
E, either that or put for whatever.
That's fine too.
Well, e, either that or put the applicant may request an extension. For whatever, our.
Title fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um.
Or title fifteen, that's.
All right, so maybe I can just read it into the record so that the motion would actually reflect that. So the new condition would be no commercial sales of extracted materials is authorized by this conditional approval, approval is granted for five years. Any future extension would be according to the terms of title fifteen.
Sound good.
Yeah, well, Danny's got a.
I, I need condition fourteen to say three years.
That's a secret. I, 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 I prefer the five.
So, and what I'm looking at is, I could live with the three, but to me, it's like, they, if, if they got problems getting started. Because of the problems that, yeah, aren't their problems, it's county problem right now, we might not have. Them be able to actually do anything for a year or two. So, that's what I'm. My problem is, it's, I don't want to give them a three year. Distance and it's today. I could start when that project starts. Okay with that, but I mean, I gotta give them time to start and stop. Okay with that, but I mean, I got to give them time to start and stop.
Any comment, Commissioner?
No, I'm, I'm okay with it starting when the project starts, not from today.
Louis Carriola, for the record. The, the applicants agreed to the five-year timeframe. And to striking the second sentence from the suggested language in condition approval fourteen.
I'm sorry, you confused me there.
They've agreed to the five years as, as written. But we can remove that second sentence.
I think the second, if you just reference Title fifteen, that's fine.
As read into the record.
Commissioner Keller.
I just wanted to comment with my fellow commissioner down there. It's probably only going to be a certain amount of time. I'm going with five, just because of the amount of time that, by the time they can start doing this process, might not be for a while. So so it might end up being three years of working anyway. If they get this today.
Anything further? Re bubble? Anything? Okay, continue.
I, I don't believe there's any changes here. We did run through the recommended changes and modifications to the conditions of approval. With with condition fourteen being adds right into the record. Extension would be in accordance with Title fifteen. Not as stated here. I'm not sure if you have any other questions of staff.
Anything further?
Did you read fifteen into the record?
Yes, I did. Yes, sir. How can you do it again?
Oh, I'm just making sure.
Nothing further, we've had commissioner comments, public comments, need to motion.
I'll take a swing at it.
Take a swing at it before it's at the pub, with a public modified condition.
Mr. Chair, I move. Mr. Chair, I, I move that we approve the request from Project One Nevada for a conditional use permit for a for a dagger extraction operation based on findings A through G and subject to the conditions of approval one through fifteen as modify, as presented during the presentation.
We've got the rest to go.
Yeah, one through fifteen.
And also the AP.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let's try this again. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request from Project One Nevada LLC for a conditional use permit for an active extraction operation within Sage Valley business specific plan on land subject to RR twenty rural residential twenty acre minimum zoning generally located north of US Highway fifty and east of Bright Street and Mark Twain on a portion of an approximately three hundred seventeen acre parcel. APN zero one six to zero two one, this three zero. PLZ dash two zero two four, dash zero two four, based on findings A through Z and subject to the conditions of approval one through fifteen as modified during this presentation.
All right, a second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Yes, what, what time do we want for lunch?
At least an hour.
You want a forty-five minute lunch? An hour? Okay, for everybody, I know you're going to be heading out. We are going to break for lunch until, let's say two thirty, because it's fifty-five minutes, so it's one thirty four, breaking for lunch until two thirty. We are going to reconvene, it is two thirty. Hope everybody had a nice fast lunch, obviously you did, because you're here. Okay. We are moving on to item fourteen, commission and committee appointments. Fourteen A for possible action, appoint up to four members to the planning commission with terms to begin January first, twenty twenty-five and expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. At this point, we do have four applicants. And we will be having the applicants get up and present their case to us as to why they should be a planning commissioner. There, as I said, four slots available. That does not mean that we will pick four members for the board today, but we will vote. And move forward with those that receive a majority vote on each item or each, each name. So we appreciate you being here. Going to see if we have anybody else on Zoom. That's one of our let's see, so we're going to start with the two here. And we're going to have draw a, a number here to see who wants to go first. Okay, we can flip. Okay. As long as everybody's happy with that, I'm just
Good afternoon, and yes, I did have a quick lunch. And my, my name is Celeste Thornhill, I live in Wellington, I'm a California refugee. And happy to be in the great state of Nevada. And living living in the country here is what like where I grew up. And I know the pros and cons of dealing with keeping it the way it used to be and progress. They've sometimes got horns. And I, I have I've been in Chamber of Commerce in Santa Clarita Valley, Valencia. Sold real estate there for thirty years. Was Chamber of Civic Association President. Ran a construction company for ten years. We did we debatable earth earth moving and, and so I have experience with with, I can drive a tractor, I can't operate a tractor, I can drive one. And my, my mission is, as my, as a retired person, I want to devote as much of my time as I can and knowledge I have over a few years to devote to the great county of Lion. And I would appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Loomis.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Wendy Loomis, Smith Valley. First of all, thank you for your time today, appreciate it. I really enjoy serving my community, I currently sit on the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board, I've been on for the last two years. And I like to get involved, I actually was part of the crew who ran the polling station on Tuesday at Smith Valley Library, and we had seriously such a fun time. Four of us in there and people kept texting me like, is it chaos? And we're like, no, it's actually fun, it was a really fun day. So I do enjoy getting involved with that. As far as experience goes with planning commissions, I was on a planning commission, went to Michigan in Civil Handship, was on there for two years, very familiar with it. And I currently do economic development for the water tribe. And so that makes me very familiar with a lot of the requirements for planning, we've got a lot of tribal, a lot of land, I help them assess the properties that we're looking at, what kind of businesses we're going to put on them, I'm also a Realtor, licensed Realtor in Nevada. And so I understand a lot about water rights and I understand a lot about land use. And I'm familiar with the whole system for the GIS and looking at properties and such like. I have a degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in business, and I would really appreciate your vote to be part of the planning commission. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any questions for the two applicants in here? I don't see Loretta or Shannon.
These two ladies were currently out, correct? And their term expired?
Yeah, their terms expire. I don't see them, so.
Did you have any concerns with either one?
All right. You do have the names in front of you, and what I would like to do is, you know, everybody has their input, everybody has any specific questions. Like to go down the list, and if you believe they should be on the board, then vote, and of course, if we have three or more votes for that individual, then I certainly will appoint them to the, to the planning commission. If you want to do that, we will go through that, if that is okay with you as far as going down, so I will ask for your, your vote, your aye or nay. Any input from the commissioners on that process? And make sure everybody has a say. And then I will make sure the appointment occurs. As I'm supposed to. Ready, ready to go down the list there, we'll start with Shannon Lee Sarasola.
Yay.
Friendly. Have a yay.
Yay.
Yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Yeah, yay. Loretta Sell, I'll start with Commissioner Hendricks. Okay. Ms. Henderson?
Yeah.
Okay. Little five oh for seating curves.
I, I want her to stop right here, because I, this is a part I want to make a comment on.
Yeah.
There's two, two people that we're looking at, the last two, they're both from down south. Okay, and we already have one from down south, so it's going to come down to do we want three more from the south and then from the growth area? Or so I wanted that as a consideration, I'm not telling you guys how to vote.
No, and I will say that Connie Kuzmicke is, his term is up and he did not reapply, if I'm not mistaken. So he is not
Right, but we have one sitting there now.
Yes.
Okay.
We have Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones. And I'm also looking at the applications, and I'm not trying to pick on somebody, but I'm looking at Celeste Thornhill's application. And that you're kind of new to the, the state. And if, and if we were to move, if we were to vote on Wendy, if we prefer, that leaves a vacancy on the advisory board. That would be a good fit to, to, to step into. I noticed that she's, that Celeste has also never been to a planning commission. And so I think a little bit of experience of, of knowing what, what to expect at a planning commission and stuff, so it'd be a great move to move from from the advisory board, uh, the, the thing. And Wendy Loomis sits on the advisory board now, so those are these comments I wanted to make, you guys can vote.
No, appreciate the comments, that's why I'm opening up.
Mr. Chair's your mic on.
Okay. Ms. Thornhill is on the parks board for several months, at least, but just throw that out there. So let's go ahead, then understand that we do have an input there. Appreciate that input. We will go to the Thornhill, I'll go down the line here. Yeah, your name?
Not at this time.
Thanks.
Nay, but thank you, and a little longer in Lake County, and that you'll have my vote.
I do want to encourage you to step into the advisory board position that'll be open. And you know, you'd have my support, start, good starting point.
Yeah, do appreciate it on the park board, but if a position opens up on the advisory board, that's a great place to get into and start really getting involved in the community, I mean, we had quite a meeting last night. It was definitely an interesting time, okay? So, but really appreciate you coming this morning, Celeste. So we'll go to the fourth, here we have Ms. Loomis, and do I have?
Yay.
Yay? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now we will have an opening, so we'll have to put that opening out for the, for the planning commission. So at this point, I will go ahead and make the appointments for possible action, appoint up to four members to the planning commission with terms to begin January first, twenty twenty-five, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. At this point, appointing
Mr. Chair, did you do public comment, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, public comment. Public comment, nothing on the board. Thank you for reminding me that. It's late in the day. I will appoint to the planning commission, Shannon Lee Sarasola from Friendly, Loretta Sell from Silver Springs, and Wendy Loomis from Wellington.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Hockday and a second by Henderson. Fourteen B. Thank you for
Would you like a vote?
Oh. Yeah, that's, I, I was looking at this, looking at votes already, okay. All those in favor.
I thought you just
Hi.
We, we had to verify.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that, that's on the plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so fourteen A is complete. Fourteen B, now keep me straight, guys, it is getting wacky.
Yes, it is.
For possible action, appoint up to two members to the nine-one-one surcharge committee with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that would be Jeff McDonald as the local exchange carrier representative and Taylor Allison as a member at large. Looks like we got two spots and two people. Both very very good people for taking care of this appointment. Do I have a motion?
Do you need public or do the motion first?
Yeah, public comment, I'm just ready here. I got it written down, I'm just not reading it.
See, and I'll make a motion, Chair Hockaday, to appoint Taylor Allison and Jeff McDonald to the nine-one-one surcharge committee, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Second, okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Human Services. Long time waiting for this one. For possible action, accept the amendment to the lease agreement with Dayton Healthcare Center LLC for Lyon County Human Services Dayton office space to extend the lease term from October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to October thirty-first twenty twenty-six with the option to extend the lease for a third year.
Hello, Dr. Sheila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, for the record. It's pretty straightforward, it's the lease for our office space to provide human services to folks in Dayton. That is also a shared space that is, provides community health nursing, of which we're provide, we are required by NRS to provide. I'm here for any questions, hopefully a Dayton complex gets built before we have to come back and extend it again.
Questions, Dr. Holmes. No questions, thank you for the information. Any public comment on that information? I'm catching on. I need a motion.
Move to accept the amendment to the lease agreement with Dayton Healthcare Center LLC for Lyon County Human Services Dayton office space to extend the lease term from October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six with the option to extend the lease for a third year.
Second.
Motion by Michelle Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero, we'll move on to county manager for presentation only, presentation of government Bombardo's consistency review letter regarding Bureau of Land Management's final programmatic environmental impact statement and proposed resource management plan and proposed resource management plan for utility scale solar energy development, my first comment is, I really liked his letter. Very well written and addressed everything, so you may proceed.
Andrew asking Lyon County Manager. So I don't, uh, I don't actually have a, a formal presentation on this. You know, we don't have a good section in our agenda to provide you guys with information. It's not, it doesn't really require a, a presentation. It's pretty self-explanatory. I, um, I do want to thank Governor Lombardo though, um, for his support in this. We submitted our letter, um, on the, our comment letter to the governor, um, in hopes it would be included as a part of his review. If you read through the letter, he, he put a lot of the comments that we had as well. Um, so we really appreciate that. And, uh, you know, it just goes to show that when we do those types of letters, it, you know, when we send it off, we may not always hear back, but, uh, it does go somewhere. It does, does get used, and I think it's very useful. So, um, happy to answer any questions or anything, but again, just really want to thank Governor's Office on this, so, um, fantastic.
Okay.
I, I was very happy with it. It was clear that he is listening and taking this issue as seriously as we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
Commissioner Keller?
No, I, I liken everything else, but it goes to show you that if you participate, you can kind of drive the train a little bit, and, and I think that's exactly what we did, so appreciate it.
Good, Jake.
No, and I think we have a good firm we work with too, to help us with that. Um, those letters and, and, uh, keeping us in the know, so something to think about as we do budget years for sure.
Absolutely. I was drafting a letter to basically present to the board. And that's why I say a lot of those issues that he brought up were in the letter that I wrote on my way to Seattle on the airplane. Um, so what I would like to do though, as far as this, is to, uh, kind of write a letter of thanks to him, that we appreciate his support and, and those who were in the meeting and, um, uh, Carson D for Nevada Association of Counties know that I got up, got up and said that these, uh, government agencies need to start with us.
Yes.
We shouldn't be getting options at the end of their program. We need to have, be the first ones that they come to and say, in your county, what would you like? Where, where could we put stuff? We know that it's BLM land, but what would work with your plans? And that's kind of what the governor said. He, he hit every high point. And so I really appreciate that, and it's kind of like what I'd like to say. So bring that back on an agenda item in a future date, um, so that we can at least present something to him. We appreciate his efforts.
Absolutely. It'll be interesting to see what the new administration does regarding.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wonder if the BLM office is going to stay in Denver now.
Well, well, to give you an example, the director of BLM for Nevada was appointed by Trump. All right.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Comptroller Report, we're looking eighteen A for possible action, approve revisions to Policy two dash three, property control to update the asset disposal process and the federal grant capitalization threshold. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record. Two reasons that I brought this to you for. Number one, federal government changed their guidance, um, in their most recent compliance supplement, so they can increase capitalization thresholds. The county's capitalization threshold is twenty-five thousand. Assets below that, we don't have to put the dollar amount in our financial statements as far as tracking from year to year. We still track our, our assets that are critical or maybe subject to theft, those type of things that are easily stolen. And so we take a look at those, but this is a dollar figure for the federal. It's a new twenty-five thousand per hour, and we have to do five thousand for the federal. Now that goes to ten thousand, just makes record keeping on the G's yours. We have inflation that was happening over the past few years.
Really?
And then in addition to that, um, Steve and I had an email discussion, Steve Riley, District Attorney, about disposing of some assets. And he's like, you know, I don't have a policy regarding this. I'm like, we do. And then I took a look at it, and I'm like, you know, technically, under the existing existing policy, if we have a chair break, we've got to come to the Board of County Commissioners, get rid of their staple, or take your pick of any of the assets, which isn't traditionally how we really function. And so what we did, or what I am recommending is just making some of that in the state of, maybe more closely match our existing practices. I'm open to discussion if you have some items that you're like, you know, that's a little too lenient, but I just thought I'd put my best effort out there for you and see what your, your thoughts were.
One staple word is okay, two, no, you need to come to us. Any other comments? No, any public comment?
Just a, I, I do have.
Okay, go ahead.
And, you know, I, I, items deemed worthless may be thrown away, blah, blah, blah. Is there a, a value on that, like, uh, items valued under this can be thrown away?
Uh.
That's way, now I could throw away anything.
Well, yeah.
They're deemed worthless.
Yeah.
Right. So that's a, a tricky one. Who's dreaming? And I guess the comptroller, based on the way I wrote this, so in theory, if it's not worthless, you can't throw it away. Is the way it is. If you want to, we want to take a look at and make that worthless or worth less than a hundred dollars.
Okay, our, our AV equipment in this room is worthless, no.
Appreciate.
And all that stuff, collect it in your office. And we'll have yard sale at the end of the year, every year, and you can take your staff out to, to lunch with the proceeds. You get that?
That's, that is not a motion.
Chair, Chairman, uh, I'll make a motion to approve revisions to Policy two dash three, property control to update the asset disposal process and the federal grant capitalization threshold.
So, good.
All right, motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor?
He did.
The comment?
You did.
Yeah, I did.
I did.
Yeah, sorry.
I was arguing with Josh.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to eighteen B for possible action, approve a revision to Policy two dash four, grants to update the federal grant capitalization threshold. Uh, look through that. It looks like there's one page with, from five to ten thousand. That's about it. Okay. So do you want to make a report on that, now that I've spilled the beans?
Thought you did it. Fantastic.
Okay. I checked it over close, let me tell you, okay? Any questions, some commissioners? Any public comment? In this policy? If not, then I'll look for a motion on eighteen B.
So, just, it went from five hundred and ten thousand dollars to ten thousand?
Five thousand.
I'm kidding. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve a revision to Policy two dash four, grants to date the federal grant capitalization threshold.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Bring up eighteen C. End of the day, this will be a little bit of a discussion, I'm sure. Um, we're going to for possible action, approve a reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding to additional projects to ensure all the funds are obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record. So we're getting pretty close to the end of the time period obligated. There are a handful of projects that we have underspent. There's one uh, large one for Fernland Justice Court, but the bid came in significantly lower than we anticipated. I did leave a five percent contingency, um, on top of what the bid award was, just we're allowed to do that under the federal guidelines. Had we known this information a couple of years ago, some of the decisions were made, would have been different on allocate funding. I wish we would have known that at the time, but we did the best we could with the information we had. Uh, so my recommendation at this point, we've kind of had a little bit of discussion on this in the past on other agenda items, is we take a look, uh, facilities is asked for a match to a federal grant at the Newington Senior Center for Ener- Energy Efficiency. You could prove that grant. The cost came in significantly higher than we originally estimated. And so instead of doing property extension and the, the Newington Senior Center HVACs under that grant, there's only enough money to do about seventy thousand dollars of a little over ninety thousand dollars at the Newington Senior Center. So facilities has requested the difference to come out of ARPA and see if that's allocated today at your discretion. They also wanted to go ahead and do those energy efficient things at the property extension office that we own. They purchased it through the one cent property tax that we have for property extension many, many years ago. And upgrade those. So that's forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars that is being requested when you're allocating. Consider allocating money towards that. In addition, from what I had provided in the packet, we've received a little more information on the Mountain House Community Center. Uh, Doug Homestead has been pricing out, getting, uh, some repairs into the roof there. And that has come in at approximately, what was it? Probably a figure right here. That has come in at ten thousand five hundred and to replace some flashing, put a seal into the, uh, spots on the roof. And then he also requested eighteen hundred and sixty-three dollars uh, for the project to stay there to do some additional fencing and moving some fence and whatever. And that was in consultation with, um, money cash. So that would be from what was originally put in the, in the summary, that would be a difference, total difference of twelve thousand three sixty-three that we wouldn't reallocate to other projects if the board agrees.
Uh, Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd actually like to see the entire twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents be reallocated to facilities for use on, on Mount House. That's things come up, because that, that building needs a lot.
So I have to be under contract or have work done by December. And so talking with facilities, they can get this work under contract and done by that point. The rest of trying to, to do those projects, my understanding is they're waiting on the appropriation process to see if we'll get a remodel through, uh, congressional appropriation. And so that's part of the reason we had anything, because once you start into it, where do you stop and where do we allocate additional funding to do that? And so certainly a discussion top of, of the board, but if we don't actually spend the money or have a contract to spend the money by December thirty-first, we send it back to the federal government.
Right. But I do want to just make a comment that we need to put money in this. Whether it comes from the federal government or our budget, we need to do something for the people.
Commissioner Hendricks?
We're putting everything else out of that into contingency, so that if something did come up and much needed repair, could we pay for it out of contingency?
So my recommendations for the board at this point, because there are specific things that we can spend this money on. I'll see if contingency isn't one.
Okay.
But what we can use it on is public safety cells. And so I'm, I'm basically saying if we put it into public safety salaries, we can spend all of the, the money that's available, which if you approve the changes that I just discussed, would leave eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars eighty-six cents to give you to the pin. Um, that amount to go into the sheriff's office and jail office budget for public safety salaries, which is ineligible use underneath that. We can spend all of that by December thirty-first, and then we can use that funding to cover the difference in vehicles and the difference, because we have this nine hundred thousand dollar in vehicles that carry over from year to year. And then we have three hundred and seventy-seven thousand approximately in salaries that are in contingency. Um, for the contract coming in higher, that will cover a portion of that as well. So if we use eight seventy-seven, we can use that to cover it. That allows us not to, to reserve contingency for that purpose and allows us when other things come up during the rest of the year to use that for the board, which is.
So what will the contingency balance be?
So it's going to be.
Right, right now, we're under twenty grand.
You're correct. You knew that.
Yeah, right.
Um, it's, I'm just gonna, well, I'm gonna add it up for you.
I appreciate that. I'm going to double ball at you.
You can throw the ball anyways. It's going to be eight hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars if it runs. And we would have lasting contingency for the rest of the year.
Eighty-three thousand.
Eight hundred and eighty-three.
That's more comfortable.
Eight hundred and ninety.
So something comes up.
Eight, eight, three, four, two.
Okay. Right.
So you're going to be able to legally shift everything around so that we end up legally again, putting it into contingency.
Right.
It sounds great.
What I would ask is a motion is that the board would reallocate, uh, funding. I may give you a new spreadsheet, and I'll give it to the clerk as well, and I have it available for anyone who wants it. This shows where the funds are being allocated from. And I'll provide information where we would put it to the part, hold on to the rate of numbers on it. Part is followed by the rate of number one.
Didn't you already get this?
You did, but this is updated in nineteen twelve thousand three sixty-three for long. So what I would recommend to the board is to reallocate the funds, uh, of the amount of nine hundred and seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-six cents to, uh, forty-one thousand nine seventy for HVAC replacements. Twelve thousand, actually, the twelve thousand three sixty-three is already taken out of this, so you're good. And then eight hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents towards public safety cells.
Eight sixty-five, what, I'm sorry?
Uh, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. It's called the safety cells.
Any further question? Anything from, from this? No. Okay, public comment? Seeing none. Think we have a final motion here to come up with. Somebody want to read eighteen C?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding to additional projects to ensure all the funds are obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, per the spreadsheet provided by Comptroller Foley.
Okay, got it.
Second?
Second from Commissioner Jacobson. All right, we had a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Good job.
Five zero.
Thank you for doing that so quickly.
Yes, we don't send money back to the beds.
And, and we don't want to go to jail.
I gotta get a jail free card.
All right. Agenda request, let's start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Let me rep. I had a conversation.
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, yeah, and, and I talked about maybe talking about the sewer situation when we do our canvas.
Had a similar conversation.
I don't have time.
All right, okay, all right. Um, we'll move on. Final commissioner comments here for the day. So let's start with Commissioner Hendricks first.
No, I thought you did a great job today handling the dissent and everything.
I think all the commissioners did. I appreciate all your input and questions, uh, Commissioner Henderson. No? Commissioner Jacobson?
I want to thank our staff for handling tough comments, um, with grace, so thank you.
Um, my final comment for Smith Valley Car Seat Safety Checkpoint. Over from sixteenth, ten AM to two PM, contact Pam Honeywell. You need her number, uh, according to the fire department, forty-nine percent of car seats aren't installed properly. Our kids are in these car seats. They need to be installed properly to protect them. So I have the flyer here. Just want to make sure everybody on Zoom and everybody else knows that, uh, they will be doing that on the sixteenth in Smith Valley at the fire department. One Hardy Lane, Smith Valley. All right, um, moving down to the final public participation. We will be reading through here. It's anticipated public participation. We held this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. If you wish to speak, please state your name for the record. You'll be doing three minutes. Do we have any final public participation in-house? I don't see anybody coming up, and I don't see anybody on Zoom. Okay, then we're going to go down. Do we have a close? Okay, then we're going to go down. Do we have a closed session today? Outstanding. I am going to say at three oh five, meeting is adjourned.